Good, we're good, okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Committee of Adjustment today. In accordance with the Sessions 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applicable-
Through you, Madam Chair, we have an error on YouTube. We need some time to-
Oh, okay. Okay. We'll be back. Just have to resolve some technical issues here. Okay, thank you. All right. Good morning again. Welcome to the Committee of Adjustment today. In accordance with the Sessions 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provinces provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and to consent to survey property to create new lots. My name is Yim Chan. I will be chairing today's hearing. And I'd like to also introduce my, our panel members today. From my far left is Mr. Ryan Bissonnet and Mr. Dylan Reed, and also Mrs. Sahi Bayet. On my right-hand side is our Deputy Secretary's Treasurer, Sabrina Salatino, and her supporting staff. And I also would like to acknowledge the land that we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Enaslabey, the Chippewa, and other Hoonasunni and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse nations.
Through you, Madam Chair. Can we just hold, please? We don't have volume on WebEx.
Okay. It seems that we have some more-
Just hold a second. Testing, testing. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Nothing yet. Still nothing.
Through the chair, we're just having some volume issues with WebEx.
Wait, wait.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Yep, they can hear us now.
Yeah, we resumed. So I would like to continue with the acknowledgement, land acknowledgement. And we'd like to acknowledge the land that we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Enaslabey, and the Chippewa, and the Hoonasunni, and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and our participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by means of WebEx and online digital platform. The meetings are now streamed on the City of Toronto Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablets, smartphones, or telephone and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask you that you also mute your devices until you are called to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled and you will be, you will only be visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be stated as attending. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist control until a video, during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a copy of the decision? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of committee on application, please filled out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal dates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the T-Lab or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land边界 Reno. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies such those terms were defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And I would like also to review the hearing procedure. First, I will call each items in the order listed on the agenda. When you are making your submission, when the application is not contested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. And the committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. For each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to speak. And I will comment on when you're reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please also remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. And please note, the committee might not entertain revisions to proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and all those entitled to notice of the application are in form of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will call the people in the room first and then those participating through WebEx. Committee, committee member may ask question of each speaker after they finish their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That will mark the end of the discussion and the application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Now, before the hearing, I'd like to also make sure that I have the confirmation of conflict interest for the morning sessions. And also, I'd like to know whether we have some previous minutes of meetings to be adopted.
Good morning, Madam Chair and panel members. Yes, the July 16th and July 23rd minutes are ready for adoption.
Yes, we have a motion for that? Yeah, Mr. Bayet, yes. Mr. Bissonnet, a second. All in favor of adopting those minutes? All in favors? And-
Through the chair, we just need to check your video.
My video? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I was, I was on before. Oops. Where's the video button? A panelist? It was there before. I turned it on.
Connection issue. Yeah, it lost connection. No, we're trying to, oh, sorry.
Okay, so are you getting her back on?
Yeah.
It was working earlier. Yeah, we're good.
Okay, we're good. Okay. Your microphone is back on again? So the room's unmuted? Okay.
Yes, so we, we can carry on from the, yeah. The next is whether, we'd like to know whether there's some deferral requests or file to be closed.
Through you, Madam Chair. There are no files to be closed. There are two deferral requests. Item number two, 2845 Dundas Street West, file number A0203/25TEY. And item number 14, 225 Delaware Avenue, file number A0445/25TEY. We can hear both of these items at this time. Okay. We can just, if you want to introduce item number two?
Yes, I will get, let me give you a minute. Okay. Item number two is 2845 Dundas Street West. And the purpose for this application is to permit the conversion of an existing three-story mixed-use building into a residential dual-class building. The ground-floor commercial unit will be converted into a residential dwelling and the two existing residential dwellings will, located on the second and the fifth stories, will be combined into one residential dwelling. And also to construct a rear third floor balcony and an elevator within the building. The existing rear exterior staircase will be demolished. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot. It's a dual-class. Committee also received a copy of the survey site plan for plans elevations and five photographs of the property. We have oppositions from 2840 and 2842 Dundas Street West. And we are ready for the agent and tell us why he requests a deferral.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good morning. I am unmuted. My name is David Johnston. I'm an architect. I'm responsible for the application. I and our staff are continuing to work with the Toronto Zoning Department to see if we can work within the existing zoning. And if we can't, then we may have to alter slightly.
Okay, so you just require more time to work that out, right? Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Since you do not have any other people here want to speak to the deferral, so I will just bring it to the panel for decision. Yeah, okay. Yes, please, Ms.-
For a deferral, Chair.
Okay. And the second? Yeah, Mr. Bissonnet, second. All in favor for a deferral? I think it's a good reason. Yeah, it's unanimously approved. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yes, you approve, your deferral is approved. And the second item for the deferral request is number 14? Number 14 is 225 Delaware Avenue. This, the purpose for this application is to convert the existing four-story detached dwelling from a four-plex into a six-unit apartment building by constructing a front and a rear four-story addition with balconies and two enclosed rooftops stair structures leading to the private rooftop terraces along with the interior alterations. The existing rear auxiliary building, which is going to be a garden suite, will be maintained and altered. There will be a total of seven residential units on this lot. And, and which is six units in the apartment building and one unit in the auxiliary building. And we receive a copy of the survey site plan for plant elevation, six photographs of property, and the deferral request from the agent. And we also receive comments from transportation, comment from community development, community planning. And we receive a number of oppositions and from different addresses, it's from Delaware and also many, no, mainly on Delaware Avenue and also from Northumberland Street. Yeah. And we are ready for the agent to tell us why he's requesting a deferral.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and six registered speakers.
Yes. Oh, okay.
My name is Shara Kachiria from Brunda Architects. Our address is 260 Carlo Avenue, Toronto, 202D. I'm acting agent for different requests for the application at 2 to 5 Delaware Avenue. So with the current updates, updates to the applicable zoning pilot that took effect last week, it's been advised that the time is needed for Toronto building staff to update the zoning review to properly reflect the applicable law in order to proceed. And we intend to work on that. We also received the comment from the community planning Thursday and we intend to work with the planning to address their concerns as well.
Oh, okay, so there are two main reasons, right? One is to have more time to work with community planning and the other is to do more community consultation.
Correct. And we would also like to address all the neighbors' concerns as well.
What? Sorry, can you repeat what you just said?
We would also like to address the neighbors' concerns.
Oh, yes. That's what, that's, okay, thank you very much. Yeah. So we do have some people who would like to speak to the deferral. So let's bring them on.
Could the speaker from 229 Delaware Avenue come up to the podium?
So, yeah, please come up. And also, I just want to remind people that now we're only dealing with the deferral requests. And we will leave the, if it's been granted, then we will deal with the detail. But at the moment, I would just like to get a response from you. What do you think about a deferral?
Hi, my name is John. This, my follower is Denik. He resides at 229 Delaware. He's 80 years old and English is his second language. We would not like to see a deferral. We'd like to have it handled today because this is a major variance. It's not minor. We're totally opposed, everybody. We even have a petition here, signed by 40 people. All neighbors that are against this. We believe he's just using this tactic to delay and somehow, we've never seen an inspector in the area. So we're just worried that this is some tactic.
Okay, I understand that. So you have, I can see you have a petition for, you know, position. But do you think that they also oppose to the deferral request? Or is this you and your dad?
Oh, sorry.
The deferral request. We are dealing with the deferral-
Oh, right. Yeah, sorry, this is new to us. So we're not sure what this, this means. But we would like to handle everything today if possible.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, that's all we need you, need from you now. Yeah, that's, thank you. So please, yeah. We can move on to the next speaker.
Okay, so we should return back?
Could the next speaker from 31 Northumberland Street come up to the podium?
Thank you, welcome. Just get, yeah, tell us your name and address and also just give us your response to the deferral request. Yeah.
Yes. Mine is not so good, but my daughter, she worked for, at the passport in the, over there, she cannot come- there, she cannot come with me today. And that's why, I don't know if you understand my enigma or not.
Yes, we can understand perfectly.
Yeah, but one thing, that property I saw when they tear down, and they said they all leave the repair.
No, at the moment, the applicant is asking to defer the case so that she will have more time to work with you and the planning department. So you, yeah, you understand the question, right? The question only for now is to tell us whether you agree to defer the case later?
No.
Or hear it today? Okay, you want to hear it today? Okay, thank you very much. That's all we need from you.
Before you leave, we need your, we need your first and last name and the address that you reside at.
And the first one, BAO, and middle name, DUC, and the last name, NQYEN.
And your address is?
31 Northumberland, behind that, the property.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you very much, we got that. Yeah. So, so, yeah.
Lisa, you've been unmuted.
Hello, Lisa, can you hear us?
Lisa, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I oppose the deferral.
Can you tell us your first and last name and your address first for the record?
My name is Lisa Zavatska. I'm at 223 Delaware, so I am a neighbor who is right beside the property. And I oppose the deferral on the grounds that many of my neighbors are elderly, many of them are not first, English is not their first language. This is causing a lot of stress. I have neighbors who are very ill, and I feel that the entire thing is causing them a lot of stress and upset to their life and schedule. They have medical appointments that they have had to rearrange in order to be present, either virtually or in person. And this is causing a major upheaval on the lives of many vulnerable people on the street. I do feel that granting a deferral will cause an undue burden. And I, again, I agree that this is a deferral tactic. There's been a lot of disinformation from Density Corporation, and I feel that this is a tactic as opposed to an authentic effort to collaborate with the community.
Thank you very much, yes. Yeah, thank you for giving us that reason. Now we can hear the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Michael, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Michael Cutner. I live at 227 Delaware, just to the north of the property that's being developed. I also oppose a deferral. I'm a palliative care patient, and it's hard for me to reschedule nurses and so on so that I can devote time to this extremely important issue.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, thank you very much, yeah. You, yeah, you object to the deferral. Okay, thank you. Bring on the next more speakers?
Jennifer, you've been unmuted.
Hello, Jennifer DeCaria, 221 Delaware Avenue, so two houses below. I object to the deferral mostly because they're currently building to their proposed scope in this variance. And if we continue to defer this, they'll continue to build higher, and they've already got the foundations poured, like they've built up to the third floor. So if we defer this, they'll continue to build more, and they will, you know, eventually will come to a point where it's going to be impossible to see this amended. So I would strongly object to a deferral on the basis that they're currently building to the proposed scope and unapproved scope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, yeah. So any more speakers for the?
Madison, you've been unmuted.
Hi, Madison Aiken, 290 Delaware Avenue, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you clearly, thank you.
Thank you. I also oppose the deferral like others. We've all taken time off to be present today, prepared materials in advance, spent time on supporting materials. The applicant and owner are professionals with stated experience in residential development and densification, and yet they seemingly did not consult city planning in the two months since they submitted their application, nor have they done adequate outreach and consultation with neighbors. This is their own oversight. There's no possible change to this application that could make it appropriate development or consistent with the character of the neighborhood or the city's official plan. What they already have a building permit for is already at the limits of what can fit on this small lot according to zoning bylaws. I do not consent to a deferral, and I request that this hearing proceeds today.
Yes. Oh, since you have mentioned that they do not, they did not carry out any labor, neighborhood consultation, have they actually come to talk to the labors? Do you see the plans? What I want to find out is whether you understand the applications enough.
I don't, I will speak for myself, but I think that the neighbors, I'm at 290, the neighbors who are closer can also be asked that question. But in my review of the information, it's very hard to understand a lot of really misleading and confusing and inconsistent information that it just really feels like, it makes it just so hard for people to understand, and it just kind of feels like we're being buried in a lot of information and paperwork and mislabeling. And again, like others, I really feel that this is just a tactic to continue building and building to get to a point where the committee is no longer able to say no to it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, yeah, thank you. Do we have more speakers?
Through the Chair, we've heard from all the speakers.
It's all the speakers. So can we bring back the agent? And I think that we all heard them, all of them, the speakers previously opposed the deferral, and then maybe the agent can respond to that? Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair. So we, after the new bylaw came in place last week, we, right away, we filed a different request, and we also only received the community planning request last Tuesday or Thursday. So we intend to work on all those items, and that is the reason we require more time to address all the concerns appropriately.
Yeah, you, but then, on the other hand, you heard that almost, actually, all the speakers now opposing the deferral, they would like to hear today. And I just want to know, prior to this hearing, have you actually reached out to the labors to clarify some of their confusions?
There have been, there have been few communication with the neighbor as per the owner. I can confirm with the owner again regarding this.
Some, you mean, how, you only think they have done it, right? But you yourself have, no record of that, no record of meeting with the labors?
We do not have those records, but as per owners and commission, they did approach several neighbor, but they weren't interested or supportive with the discussion.
Okay, so do you have, do you also gather some kind of support from some of them?
I cannot say that, I cannot confirm that.
Okay, thank you very much. Any question, yeah, we have also some question to you. Thank you, please, yeah.
Yeah, so the neighbors are concerned that if there's a deferral, that the builder will continue building beyond the current building permit and actually build some of what's being asked for before it comes back to committee. Can you speak to that?
So right now, whatever builder are building is within the current permit that has been approved, nothing is getting built without any permit approved.
Okay, so you can guarantee that there won't be any construction beyond the existing building permit until this has come back to committee?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Yes, Mr. Byatt, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to check with you. You are aware that planning has basically said we should refuse this application? And I think I have heard or read comments by some of the residents that some construction is going on. And in your, in the purpose of your application, you mentioned that the existing rear ancillary building, which is a garden suite, will be maintained. Is it, was it a garden suite?
Yeah, the current, the permit that has been approved is the garden suite, current ancillary building, and it will be maintained as is.
It's currently being built?
Yeah, it's currently being built.
So it's not existing?
The permit has been approved.
But it's not existing?
Correct.
Because your application purpose talks about an existing structure, but one of the photographs shows that, of course, it's being constructed. So there wasn't, from my understanding of what you're just saying, is that there wasn't a garden suite prior to this?
Yes.
Yeah?
Correct.
There wasn't?
It looks like there wasn't a garden suite, it's now being built.
What does that mean, yes?
The garden suite is being built with the main house currently, and both the permit for the main house and garden suite both were accepted at the same time. So both constructions have started.
Do you have a, do you have a building permit for the garden suite?
Yes, we do.
And so it's not an existing one? Because your application purpose says the existing rear ancillary building, brackets, garden suite, will be maintained and unaltered. But you're altering it, and you state that it's existing, but you have a building permit to build it. So there's some confusion on my part or your part, I'm not sure which.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I'll second to, to something to say, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, the pictures show that it's under construction, right? The applicant is saying that they have a permit. So the wording can be that the rear ancillary building is currently under construction with an authorized building permit? If that's the case?
I think that applies to the main building as well, to convert the, currently it says the existing four-story detached dwelling, so maybe we can change that wording as well to the four-story dwelling currently under construction.
That's true, yeah.
We just have to be careful that, we just have to be careful to follow what the permit states, right? And then anything extra is what they're coming to committee for, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, but then the first part of the purpose is to, is both of them are under constructions though, right, stated there?
Through you, Madam Chair, they can construct what they have building permits issued for. Anything extra, they cannot build unless the Committee of Adjustment approves the application, there's no appeals, and it becomes final and binding.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, what I want, looking at actually is the planning report. If you look at the planning report, it seems that they understand the way that we do, that both of them are actually under constructions, both the lane-based suite and the apartment building. So I think that they have to clear it with the planning too. That one?
Through you, Madam Chair, I mean, the purpose of deferral is to continue to have further discussions with community planning, to do the community outreach, and then, you know, consider revisions, and then submit a revised zoning review. So that's what the members would consider today if you find merit to defer this application.
Yeah, and also they will have to stop construction before they get their approval of what?
We would leave that in the hands of Toronto Buildings to manage.
I see, okay. All right, so any more questions before we discuss this request? No, so we do not have any more question now, it's in committee to make a decision on the, on granting or not the deferral?
Yes.
I very much understand the concerns of the opponents. But it is extremely inconvenient to defer, but we have to count on Toronto Building to make sure that nothing beyond what is currently permitted is built before we make a decision. And the fact that they received a refusal from city planning just last week is actually a pretty reasonable grounds for deferral. And I would hope that they would actually revise their plans considerably in order to conform with what city planning is looking for, and that that would address some of the concerns of the neighbors as well. So I think that we do need to go ahead with the deferral, even though I understand the inconvenience that's causing to the neighbors.
But what I'm concerned is, if you look at the variances, some of them directly related to the main building, the apartment building, right? If they do have a permit for that, they will not appear here, right? It would have been approved.
Yeah, so.
That's why I think that there's a huge contradiction here, because even the period, the current working work permit, they can only give them a work permit when the zoning was cleared. But it seems that even the main building itself, not the garden suite, hasn't cleared the zoning. And I'm not too.
Through you, Madam Chair, they can build to a building height of 13 meters, they can build to a building depth of 17 meters, as long as they're building what is in conformity with the zoning bylaw.
Yes, exactly.
At a certain point, they need to stop.
Yeah.
They also, because it's a four-placed, I think they can build to a depth of 19 meters as a four-placed, but as an apartment building, they may be able, they may require a variance.
That's what I'm saying, something has changed, why they have, they granted the permit before, they start building.
They were granted a permit for a four-placed.
Yeah, yeah.
And now they're trying to build an apartment building.
Yeah, that's what I mean, something has changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I find it confusing too. If they want to change the application, the whole thing has, the whole construction has to stop to make, right?
But they can build to what's currently permitted, which is four stories. Or 13, 13 meters.
But, but that's, we do not know whether they would stop there, right? If they're asking for more?
Yeah, well, they, they can't, they're not supposed to continue building until we've approved or they've agreed with, you know, community planning or whatever.
Through you, Madam Chair, it's before Toronto Buildings.
Yeah, I see. It's not, okay, thank you. So what about the deferral? You agree that they need more time to sort this out?
I think that faced with a community planning refusal, it's reasonable for them to work with planning to redesign their proposal.
Okay.
Into something that community planning finds acceptable.
Thank you.
And then also hopefully talk to neighbors and work with neighbors as well to find, to address some of their concerns.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I understand the emotions related to development in the neighborhood and, you know, I thank everyone who has spoken today. What I've heard is there's a lot of confusion. I think us on this field, the confusion as well. I do think it is appropriate to grant a deferral because they clearly need time, the proponent needs time to work with city staff and to better communicate with neighbors. So I'm in favor of granting the deferral.
Okay, yeah.
If I may just add to this, I think the discussion we've just had and some of the questions that have been raised by us here, I think hopefully that will add to the fact that the applicants will, will stop construction when they reach a certain point, if they haven't got permission to go any further.
Okay.
They have to come back at some point. They have to come back at some point.
Can we, can, if we were going to grant a deferral, that was Secretary Treasurer, can I ask you a question? Can we put a condition on that the, the current construction will be, will be, will be stopped? Or, what do you call that, yeah, stopped right now until they, no way? They can still continue, that we cannot put a condition like that?
Through you, Madam Chair, again, we have to let Toronto Building staff do what they need to do for this application. At any point in time, anyone can put in a call to 311 and have an inspector go out to the site. And if they have to do a work stop order, then they can. But currently, it is before Toronto Buildings.
Okay, so we will ask the neighbors if they have any concerns, just call 311. Okay, thank you very much.
And through you, Madam Chair, the deferral would be to have further conversations with community planning, have the community consultation outreach to the residents.
Yes.
Submit accurate plans that reflect what is actually happening on site.
Yes.
Okay, and then obviously submitting a revised zoning review if revisions have been made.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
All right, that's clear, those are the, our, our condition for the deferral. So anyone want, do we have a motion? Yeah, we, yes, Mr. Reed has, has a motion to defer.
Yeah, I'll move deferral for the reasons so precisely laid out by the Secretary Treasurer, emphasizing also including with the possibility of revising the plans in consultation with the neighbors and with community planning. Yeah.
Okay, well, a second? Yeah, Mr. Byatt, a second? All in favor of the deferral for all those reasons? Thank you very much, and I really wanted to remind the applicant this time really make your better effort to reach out to your neighbors, to the residents, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, now we can move on with item number one.
Okay, thank you, yeah, it's defer, yeah. So now, item number one is, address is 181 Sterling Road. This is to alter the exist, the development standard is a site-specific bylaw for a new 17-story mixed-use building with 266 dwelling units and two retail units and 84 parking spaces with, with two levels of below-grade garages, and now is under construction. We also, they want to also reduce the parking space sizes. And we have received copy of survey site plan for plans and elevations, two photographs of the property, and also a cover letter from the agent, decisions affecting the subject property and parking stall size study, and planning rationale from the agent, and site-specific bylaws and site-specific bylaw amendment. We received comment from community planning and also advisory of, from MetroLinks, advisory comment from MetroLinks. So we are ready for the agent.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
No others, speakers, okay, yeah.
Ryan, you've been unmuted. Ryan, you've been unmuted.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, just give us your first and last name and your address for record.
Yes, yes, thank you, my name's Ryan Doherty. I'm a land use planner with Bowsfields, agent to this application, and my address is 3 Church Street in Toronto.
Okay, thank you. You do not have any oppositions, but just give us a very, very short, a brief summary of what you're requesting, just reducing the size of some parking, some spaces or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to just give a brief overview, and that's exactly correct. So this application pertains to Block 4B in the broader Sterling Road revitalization area. And this block is now developed with a 17-story mixed-use building known as House of Assembly. And so the committee had actually previously approved variances in 2023 to permit the development of this building, and so it's in the final stages of construction. And so what we're requesting here with this application is three variances from the bylaw, essentially pertaining to adjusting some of the required dimensions for vehicle parking spaces. So in particular, these variances would permit up to 16% of the parking spaces to be obstructed, or otherwise known as small car parking spaces. They would also permit electric vehicles, supply equipment, EV chargers essentially, to be located within a parking space, and then to permit one parking space to have a reduced vehicle length. So we, as you had mentioned, we did submit a, a parking space size review from BA Consulting Group, which tested the functionality of the spaces, and that report concluded that the spaces continued to be functional. And we didn't have any comments or objections from community planning or transportation review on this application. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's essentially to deal with issues that have come up during the construction process, which have led to more parking spaces being partially obstructed than originally anticipated.
Thank you, okay, thank you, any question to this? No, we don't have any more question now, we're in committee. Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Yes, I'm always happy to encourage the use of smaller cars. So I move that we approve these variances without any conditions. Also, I noticed that transportation's okay with it, so I think it's important.
Yeah, they both, yeah, I know, so there's only a MetroLink advisory com memo.
So I move that we approve these variances with no conditions.
Yes, and a second, please, Mr. Basinett, second, and all in favor for approval unanimously approve. Thank you, you approve, yeah. So the next item is item number three, is 1473 Tenth Fourth Avenue. The purpose for this application is to alter the existing two-story non-residential building, which is containing medical offices. By constructing interior alteration with the basement level to convert the storage space into additional medical office space, no accessible vehicle parking spaces or bicycle parking space will be provided on the lot. We receive a site, a copy of the survey site plan for plans and elevations, total of five photographs of the property, and also a previous decision affecting the subject property. And we also receive a comment from transportation engineering. And we're ready for the agent of applicant.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Yes.
Joe, you've been unmuted.
133 Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Okay, did you get the name?
Please provide your first and last name and address.
Yes, Joe Dome, 133 Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Okay, thank you, yeah. You do not have any opposition, so I, I checked with the panel once, presentation, okay, no. They have read all the material, they, they do not need the presentation from you. So you have any question to the, to the agent? No, we do not have any question to you either. We are ready to move into discussion. Do you have anything you want to address the panel before we do that? Now is the time.
Not particularly, there's a fairly straightforward application. Planning staff and transportation staff have reviewed and have no concerns. I, I would just note that for the, the parking spaces that there, I'll note that there are four existing legal boulevard parking spaces right in front along the Parkmount, the Parkmount roadside.
Yes.
There's a Green Pea parking lot across the street.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I, I look at the site, yeah, that's the case. And also, I, I wonder that for the bicycle space, actually, isn't it the boulevard, the city boulevard will have, will have some parking for the, for bikes anyway?
Yes, that's correct, there's actually a currently existing bike rack on the city boulevard portion.
Yes, thank you, all right, thank you, we're now in committee, yes.
I'll put forward a motion to approve the variances as requested.
There's no other, no question, I don't see any conditions, yeah, okay. One, like to second, Mr. Byatt, second? All in favor of approval, unanimously approve with no conditions? Thank you very much, it's approved. So we, we are, item number four is 3971 Road. This, the purpose is to permit retail and takeout eating establishment on the, on the property and within the first story of the existing two-story semi-detached building. There will be one retail and takeout eating establishment located on the first floor and a residential dwelling unit maintained on second story of the building. We receive, welcome, we receive a copy of the survey site plan for plans and elevation, six photographs of the property, and also a cover letter from the agent. And we receive a letter from Councillor George Matlow, and we receive quite a number of support from, from 4211, and also there's quite, quite a number of signature, 126 signature petition in support. I'm not going to read all the petition name. Yeah, welcome to the community adjustment.
Sorry, through the chair, we have the agent here in person as well as the tenant.
Do we have other speakers?
There's no speakers.
Okay, all right, so we do, please introduce yourself since you're here.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, through you, members of the committee. My name is Aaron Platt, I'm counsel and agent for the applicant and the owner. I have with me that the tenant who will be the operator of the business, I thought it might be best if you wanted to, if you had questions, you might want to hear from Ms. Sarah Schwartz-Geller, who operates the, the business there that's moving from just a bit down the street where it had operated previously. I'm here to answer any questions. If the committee would like a presentation, I'd suggest that Ms. Schwartz-Geller provide it. But I would, the only thing I would add to the, the list of items that you mentioned in terms of what, what is there in the application is the one thing that is missing, which is any reference or objection whatsoever to the application from anyone in the community, which I know is a rarity sometimes at this committee. But I, I thought it would be worth noting nonetheless, given its obvious significance. With that, I hand the mic over to Ms. Schwartz-Geller.
Yes, yes, I'd like to follow up that usually if an application does not have anyone to object, we will ask the panel whether they require a presentation. Then we will, maybe we will save some time because we have read all, all, all your material. And I, now, if you don't mind, we, we can move to, to committee. Have you both given your name and address and for record, okay?
Yes.
Yes, please, you have question maybe, yeah.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Yeah, please, yeah, go ahead.
I was just looking at a Google map, a Google Street View, and I think it's August 2024 image. The premises has a little sign on the window called the. Yeah.
Yes, that was the, there was a, the, the owner of the building had a previous tenant in there that was, it was some sort of, sort of after-school program or tutoring kind of thing, and that, that tenant's no longer there.
Yeah.
Soul Provisions is looking to moving in, yeah.
Thank you, I just was curious, see what it was, thank you.
Yes, yeah.
I was just gonna motion if we're in committee.
Oh, okay, yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, so I was, I was here when we approved something next door, in fact. And, you know, this is a great little, sort of small commercial space, which I think is something very much the city is encouraging. You know, the 15-minute city that we're all looking for. Clearly, it's hugely desirable, desired by the local people. So I am more than happy to move approval of these variances.
Yes. Mr. Byatt, second, and I, I agree with your comments, it's a very desirable, I think appropriate development, yes. All in favor? There are no conditions either, right?
No conditions.
unanimously approve with no conditions.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your morning.
Yes, we will try, yeah. Item number five is 8 Mackenzie Avenue. The purpose for this application is to legalize and to maintain the existing rear two-story ancillary building, which was approved. The ancillary building has converted into one garden suite without an authorized building permit, and also just to maintain the existing rear pond. For this, we have received a survey site plan for plans and elevations, six photographs of the subject property, and also cover letter from the agent and decision affecting the property, the subject property, and a copy of email corresponding for city planning and the agent, and a site-specific zoning bylaw, and also an order to comply affecting the subject property. We also received comment from transportation, and we receive support from 27 Mackenzie, and oppositions from number six Mackenzie. We are ready for the agent, yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and one registered speaker online.
Okay. The speaker is in opposition, right? Okay, thank you, yeah.
Albert, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, give us your names and address, please, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Albert Yerushalmi, I'm the agent for the owner. I live in 34 Federal Valley Court, Markham, Ontario.
Okay, thank you, you do have opposition, so we require you to give us a five-minute presentations on your application. Please go ahead, yeah.
Yes, the, this application was originally, went through the Committee of Adjustment about two years ago. And at that time, I don't know, for some reason, the original architect asked for a storage space, whereas, and the committee, the Committee of Adjustment asked why didn't go for a garden suite, but that was too late. So he, he obtained a building permit to build, to construct, and the building has been completed, and the interior is at the framing stage, and it's not completed yet. So there, there is, there is a water meter inside that garage that, that's for the entire residence. And I think there was a misunderstanding that they have moved forward to finish this as a garden suite, but as, as per the owner, that's not the case. So we are here to request essentially a change of views for this, to, to obtain a permission for garden suite, which is, is right by, by the bylaw. And we, I have, we have received support for the, from neighbor across, and objection from the next-door neighbor that he is requesting the two existing windows that face his, his residence to be, to be frosted. And we don't have any problem with that, we can, we can conform with that. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to respond.
Okay, thank you. We will hear the oppositions, and then we'll get back to you with questions or have your response. Okay, let's have the next speaker.
Paul, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, good morning, my name is Paul Leishman, and I live at 6 Mackenzie Avenue.
Okay, thank you, so, yeah, let's give us your, your point of view, yeah.
Great, I'll keep my remarks brief, in particular because the agent has stated that they have no objection to my request for the condition that the two second-floor south-facing windows be glazed. So I live immediately next door to the applicant, along with my wife and two young children. We don't actually object to the conversion of the applicant's garage into habitable space. As the committee will have read in our submission, the applicant's two-story the applicant's two-story garage abuts our family's heritage coach house at the back of our property. We likewise didn't object when the applicant initially appeared before committee two years ago, proposing to add that second story to their garage, even though it meant that the two east-facing windows in our coach house would be entirely obstructed by a new wall and that natural light from the vantage point of our home would be overtaken by a twenty-five-foot garage. So the one request that we wanted to lay out today, which we hope the committee finds to be a reasonable one, and we're glad to hear the agent agrees that it is a reasonable one, is that any second-story south-facing windows on the applicant's proposed garden suite be glazed to prevent overlook onto our property and our entrance nursery. We believe this condition would ensure that any approval today balances the need to develop new housing, which we appreciate is important, with responsiveness to issues of overlook, reduced privacy, and reduced access to light. Yeah, just, I mean, just two final points. The windows in question are quite high. They're roughly eighteen feet tall. That puts them close to the elevation of the allowable roofline of a garden suite, according to the city's rules. And, yeah, we've attempted to solve this privacy problem through other means, including finding trees, couldn't. So, yes, I'm relieved to hear that the agent agrees with that request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank, thank you. So let's bring back the agent and we, yeah.
Yes, as I mentioned, we don't have any issue to, 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 the two south-facing. If you go down, you can see them all the way down, all the way down, the way down. Yeah, yeah, up, 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 up. This, this, no, no. These two, these two. Just go down, this, these two windows. It's, yeah, yeah, one and the other one next to it. These are the high windows that I believe the, the neighbor is referring to. They're, they're going to be frosted, so there won't be any, any intrusion into his residence.
Thank you. Okay, any question to, yes, I do have it. Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Did you see the transportation condition that was sent in quite late?
Yeah, I had a conversation with them yesterday. And they suppose, Mrs. Helen, propose to bring forward an application for a boardboard, boardboard parking at the rear, separate from this application form. For now, for now, the owner has a, has an accessibility permission to park anywhere. So for now, we, we, we're gonna move forward for the application for a boardboard parking after this application.
So just to clarify, is the garden suite is gonna be on both? Is there gonna be parking still on the first level, or is it gonna be no parking?
No, no, no parking, no parking.
Okay, so we, are you okay if we include the transportation condition?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have questions about the, the whole thing about the order to comply. And I can restart bring up the previous decision, second page, the previous decision. I am a little bit concerned about this application is only because the period decision that was approved as a parking and storage space that is not a unanimously approved, by the way, by committee adjustment. But then you read the condition, the two, the second one. The second story of the altar osserial building shall not be used as habitable space. And it was approved with these conditions. It was just two thousand twenty-three. Can you explain to us why? You know that this is a condition and you still build, you're still building it, that's why you receive an order to comply?
Yes, the only difference between what we are asking right now and the previous application, the billing permit is the staircase to the second floor. But right now, there is nothing done there, right? I mean, it's the middle of construction. Nobody lives there. It's not being used as a habitable space. And the owner knows and knew that he had to go to committee of adjustment to change that. And I want to mention that originally, the, this August twenty-three application in the committee of adjustment, the members actually asked why we are not going through with an application for a garden suite. And I mentioned that the, the original architect made a mistake that didn't submit it.
That's not, you're not answering my question. I'm not trying to say why you're building. I'm just trying to say that you know the conditions, but you still go ahead and build, build it. And you said that you're not building it, but it's not true in the order of comply, which is describing that you're continuing, the construction is continuing in the building for plumbing, electrical, et cetera, without obtaining building permit to build a garden or living suite. That's the, the order to comply description. And I just want you to address that instead of what you intended to, to build a garden suite, which did not appear in the last decision. And the decision was, you were given a condition not to convert it, but you went ahead and converted. And I just, like, you to respond to that.
Okay, I think there's a misunderstanding there because there is a response from the owner that is specific, is mentioning that there is no roughing for, for electrical or for, for plumbing. The, what the inspector saw inside was water inside that garage. That water is a water meter. It's not, it's not something that was pulled from the original building. It was there for all, every, from the beginning. So he thought that this has been, has been installed in order to serve the garden suite. But that wasn't the case.
But then you did not, you did not have a chance to explain to the inspector and.
I wasn't there. I wasn't there. I wasn't there. He, essentially, he apparently did, but the inspector, he said that inspector even didn't go inside. He just, he just issued that without accepting any invitation to come in and take a look.
Anyway, I thank you for your answer. So any more question? I asked, this is a condition that they, they, I, I, I just found out from both of the documents, yeah.
If I may just add a little piece, Chair, I think I was going to raise the same question because there was a condition. And the response I just heard a moment ago that the problem lies with the inspector not checking. I think that is, it's, the inspector's not here to defend himself. What we see is what has been written. So I, I find this, this particular application quite problematic because it's very clear that this, the condition, that it's not to be a habitable space. If you really wanted to change that, you've come forward and said we'd like to convert it.
Okay, now we are still in question. We should ask if we have any question to this agent. Yeah, no, it's fine. I, I appreciate those comment, yeah.
I just gonna clarify, the agent referred to the covering letter, which does have an explanation for what happened? Whether we find it convincing.
No, we have, we have question to the agent now. When we finish, we can discuss.
I'm just, I'm just following up on what the agent said.
Yeah, I see, I see.
The agent said that there is a covering letter. There is a cover letter that explains clearly what happened.
That's exactly what he just said because the misunderstanding, okay. Mr. Bissinett, you have any questions? To the agent first and then.
I don't know.
Okay, all right. We do not have any more question now. We are in committee. Yeah, please bring up your comments that you just.
Yeah, I, I find, I'm worried that the proponent is playing the game, where they start to proceed with construction, they begin, given an order to comply, and now they come and use the committee of adjustment to further their plans. So I have a big problem with this, with this proponent and with this application. I don't like to see orders to comply where proponents have moved forward without permits. So I'm having a lot of trouble with this application.
Yeah, I, I, the main thing to me is that, the first reason why I have problem is that from the beginning, when they're building this two-story parking space with windows and with doors on the second floor, was approved with conditions. What I mean is at that time, they, they could have chosen to actually apply for garden suite. They could have applied for everything they wanted. And then maybe it will still be a proper, a channel, I think. But now we have a condition that override the last committee's decision based on what they are asking, which is not permitted as a habitable space. And then, then they move on to say the inspector make a mistake because he could, he could, he could not understand what the plumbings are for. And this is only given there by their evidence, right? But by, by the document, we clearly, they actually clearly say that it's plumbing and it's, it's electrical and all that is being constructed. So I, I, I have difficulty overriding the last committee adjustment condition. With the full intention of what they want to build, this could have applied for that. Yeah, okay.
If I can take a slightly different point of view. I, I do feel like they, indeed, they could have applied for garden suite the first time. And so it's not clear to me why they wouldn't have. The, the, the condition was a standard one if you're trying to build storage above a garage. And perhaps they still want to use the garage at that point. Like, I don't, I don't really see any creeping thing here because they probably would have got approval in the first place for a garden suite at the original time. So to me, either, as the agent said, it was an oversight or they, they changed their minds. And clearly, they're still using as a garage at the moment, so maybe at the first, they wanted to keep a garage and have some storage space. You know, so I, I don't really, like, we definitely see cases where there's creeping, this kind of creeping thing in order to comply. But here, they could have got it in the first place if they'd wanted to. The committee actually asked them. They said they weren't looking for it. So to me, it seems more convincing that there was a misunderstanding with the thing. And also, I mean, overall, this is, I think, desirable. The, the neighbors are okay with it with the condition. A garden suite is a good thing to have in this location. It's building on an existing, existing structure. So, I, I mean, I do wonder why they didn't include fixtures with the additional build. They only include pictures from before that, which is a bit weird. But to me, it does, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a creeping, a kind of trying to play the game because they probably could have gotten the approval in the first.
Actually, yeah, they changed their mind. They want to convert in the garden suite. When they go start the application first before they build and putting in plumbings and all that stuff.
Well, that was, well, I mean, we don't know. We don't know if indeed there was just a misunderstanding or if they were trying to put in a H-VAC as well. But they're coming now.
Yeah, all right, I can hear you. So, Mr. Byatt, you want to add your piece?
I, I concur with Mr. Bissinett. I think it's a very problematic one. And I understand Mr. Reed's point as well, that, you know, if they just started right from the beginning and said we would like a garden suite, it likely would have been approved. So I, it's one of those situations that is always, it's almost ethical issue. I mean, I have difficulty in terms of supporting the application because I do believe, I have a sense that they took the wrong route. When it was very clearly stated right from the beginning, it was not to be a habitable space. And then, you know, doing the work and then coming forward after the fact, I always find that very problematic. So I'm not too inclined to support this application at this point.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor? You want to?
Okay, perhaps, Mr. Bissinett, would you, or would you like me to?
I'm still having an internal debate.
You know, it's, it's one, it is one of those challenging situations. On the bright side, I mean, it's, I think on the bright side, we've got a structure on the existing footprint of the garage.
So the, the, the only condition we would add would be the privacy windows, the glazing and the.
And the transportation.
Transportation condition. Okay. I'll, I'll move a motion to approve the variances with the conditions of glazing for privacy on the windows and the transportation condition.
And the south-facing windows.
South-facing windows, yeah.
You were second. That's the way I said, didn't second. All, all in favor? Two, I, I guess I, I, I have to, I have to agree. Yeah, three, one approved with the two conditions. And also, we like to get a note that we, the committee of adjustment do not conduct construction before obtaining proper approval and building permit. Thank you, yeah.
And Mr. Byatt, dissented.
Thank you. The next item we have is number six. The, the property is one eighty-three Gleymon Avenue. The application, the purpose is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front cover porch with stairs and a front integral garage. And we have first floor walkout and we have second story deck with stairs. There will be a total of two residential dwelling unit on this lot. And we receive also a copy of the survey site plan for plan elevations and four photograph of trees and also a cover letter from the agent. We also receive comment from urban forestry.
Through the chair, we have the agent online as well as two registered speakers in interest.
Of interest, yeah, or opposition, right, also, okay, okay, thank you.
Nadeem, you've been unmuted.
I'm Chair. My name is Nadeem Irfan, NIA Architects Inc., Ten Millar Business Corp., Suite 710, Scarborough, Ontario, M1B 3C6.
Okay, thank you. You do have some people like to speak to your application, so we'd, we'd like to have a presentation for you, from you, for five minutes maximum, yeah.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a duplex we are proposing. There are five variances in front of the committee to consider for approval. The variance number one is as a result of that we're not digging enough. And our first story is considered, our basement is considered as a first story. We understand that's the definition in the bylaw. And as a result, the first variance is, you know, first variance is required. If we do dig another two feet down, we would not be having this variance. I have provided a sketch showing, demonstrating that why this variance isn't being, you know, coming up. So the number two variance is the side yard setback, where requirement is point nine. And we're proposing point six one. The existing house is actually point three eight meter away from the neighboring property. So we are now actually leaving more, point six one. This is an improvement from the existing condition. The variance number three and four are as a result of the mutual driveway. We have demonstrated in the sketch number two, which is just, if you, if, if you can bring it up the screen. If we do not have this right-of-way driveway, we would be complying with this front yard landscape and the soft landscape requirement. And lastly, the variance number five, which is the wall height. It is more prevalent design these days. And we have to note that there is no variance for the building height. It is just the wall height. And we believe these variances are very small in nature and committee could consider this for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will hold our question. We will hold our question to you until we hear the other speakers. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Kim, you've been unmuted.
Hello, Kim Herden, and I live at 181 Gleamont Avenue. My home is just to the south of 183. And similar to the previous speaker, I've got two windows on the north side of my home and just want to make sure that any windows that they plan to put in don't line up with any of my windows since it's just across the width of our driveway. So I'm not an architect. I can't tell from the drawings, but everything else looks fine to me. The shared driveway, they've taken that into account, which is fantastic. So if the windows do line up, if they could glaze or frost their windows, I'm cool. If they're putting windows in. Again, can't tell.
Only the upper windows are worried about, right?
On the ground floor. Yeah, not the upper, not the second floor, I guess, if you will. So just, yeah, the ground floor.
Oh, the little one and also the door has a window. You worry about that too?
I'm honestly not sure because I don't know, as I said, if it lines up with my two windows. If they do, if they could glaze or take care of that in some way, that would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank you. Ready for next, yeah.
Nika, you've been unmuted.
Oh, hi. I'm actually more about 156 Gleamont Avenue. Conversation, not this one.
Oh, I see. So that'll be later on, right, that one? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so do we have any other speakers?
Through the chair, we don't have any more speakers. Perhaps we can go back to the agent.
Okay, yeah.
You, Madam Chair, we acknowledge the comments from our neighbor on the south side.
Yes.
We will definitely go meet and accommodate their, you know, request.
Yes.
If the windows are aligned, we will definitely like to move the windows. If it's not possible, we will put the frosting film on the windows.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Just wait and see if we have questions for you. Do I have any question for the applicant? Okay. We do not have any more questions now. We are in committee. Yeah, all right. I think it's good that, yeah, you respond to the neighbor's concern, yeah.
Yeah, I think this is a good proposal. I think it gives a lot of improvements to the street and the neighborhood. And I'm happy to support this proposal and these variances. Looking at my colleagues.
Yes, since you have too big of impact. But there's a forestry condition, three.
Sure. So would you like me to move a motion? Yeah, okay, I'll move a motion to submit, or sorry, to support and approve the variances subject to forestry conditions. Number three.
Yes, and also, do you want to put a condition is the privacy, create privacy order for treatment?
If required, privacy glazing.
Yeah, glazing on the south side.
If the windows were lined up, they offered privacy glazing.
Yeah, yes.
Can I second that just with a comment that I really appreciate that they actually expanded the side yard variance? I think that's a really thoughtful gesture to actually improve that with a new build.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. I think we should just keep it that they're going to glaze those windows on the south elevation, lower level.
Okay.
Because then it may get into a battle of whether or not things are lining up or not, so, okay.
Yeah, yes, that's the cleaner, yeah, condition. So with those two conditions, all in favor? It's approved with the two, yeah, all in favor unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, second that motion?
Yes. So that's approved, it's item number six, and we move to item number seven. The property is 64 Humberville Road. The purpose is to alter the existing one-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second and a third-story additions. The current application is necessary to seek further approval for the increased height of the roof level from the previous approved minor variance decision. We also receive a survey site plan for plant elevations and eleven photographs of the property and the decision affecting the subject property corresponding from the agent and also the tree protection plan by the agent and TRCA permit letter and upwards report submitted by the agent. And we have received corresponding from Heritage City Planning and also from community conservation of TRCA leather, sorry. And then a staff report from Natural Vision Feature Protection. And we also received sixteen letters of support signed by Humberville Road and also all of them, and also one in Humbur Crest and also three from Van Moore Crescent. And we have received opposition from, there's no address, the first opposition, the second is from number four Humbur Crest Boulevard.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay, they're seeking two variances. We are ready for the agent, yeah.
Paris, my address is 371 Strawberry Crescent, Waterloo, Ontario.
Yes. So you do not have, you have couple of position in writing. So do you want to address some of this concern first or do we need a presentation from him? No?
Maybe he should just quickly address the concerns.
Yeah, can you address the concern from the opposition, please?
Yeah, definitely. I could, I read the letter briefly and their main concerns were in regards to the height of the building. I could assure you that the additional .55 meters is something that you would not see from the street. The majority of that .55 meters is in regards to the projection of the skylight, which is, I believe there's two skylights at the top of the roof. But you'll notice the pictures that they provided and the pictures that the homeowner provided, you'll see that all the trees, it would be impossible to see those skylights or even see the top of that roof. It's very, like I said, there's a lot of trees that we're protecting and the top of that roof is unseeable. And if, even if we didn't have those trees, to see the top of a roof is impossible.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any question to the applicant? Okay, yeah, thank you for addressing that. And we are now in committee, yeah. Anyone want to start? Yes, Mr. Byatt, yes.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a very straightforward application. We have two variances in front of us. The height variance of an additional .55 meters is very minor. And the second variance request is the height of side exterior main walls. And that too is minor. So I don't have any issues with this particular application. I think it's very straightforward and very supportable.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to second? You have a second? Yes, Mr. Bissinett, second?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. There is one condition.
Yes, yes, there's a condition.
Forestry one condition.
Yes, ribbing natural features, so number one.
Yes, there's a condition from the natural. Is there? Okay. With that condition, you still want a second, Mr. Bissinett? Yes. So all in favor of that conditions? Unanimously approved. Thank you. Yeah. So item number eight is 911 Davenport Road. This is to permit the non-residential type of existing, type of the existing two-story detached office building and permit an office use on all floors, a retail use on all floors and an art gallery on the basement and the first floor and an eating establishment on the basement and first floor. And this, they're asking for five variances. We have received a copy of the survey site plan for plant elevations, four photographs of trees of the property and a cover letter from the agent and fourteen forms of letters of support. And we also received one opposition from 36 Heter Avenue. Yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person and one registered speaker in interest online.
One speaker, yes, okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Could we find out what their interest is and maybe the agent can speak to that?
Yeah. You mean the opposition?
Well, we have them down as interest, so I'm not sure.
Oh, interest, I see.
It's opposition or interest if they're asking questions.
Oh, okay, yeah, whether they will, yeah, all right.
Charles, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, yeah. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, yeah.
Great. So I'm Charles Hat and I also have my wife Natalie Hat here with me. Our property is 434 Christie Street and that's our family home. We live there with our three young children. Our backyard directly-
Sorry, Charles, are you going to be speaking in opposition or in interest of this application?
So we want to confirm something to know whether we're in opposition or not.
Okay, so ask your question, then we'll go back to the agent. We'll have them present and then we'll hear back from you.
Yes, so my question is, our backyard abuts the backyard of this building, which the zoning being requested includes a restaurant use. And so to confirm whether, to confirm that the zoning would not include a patio for the restaurant because the, or cafe or whatever, eating establishment, because the backyard for the, this building directly abuts our backyard and a couple other residential backyards next door.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from the agent and then we'll come back, okay?
Yes. Thank you. So we are ready for you, yeah. We just want to make, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Peter Vilchin from the applicants. I just want to start off by you've indicated there are five variances being requested. In fact, there are six.
Oh.
The sixth variance is for handicap accessible parking spaces.
Just then, then we'll hold on, then just important to find out whether, on our agenda is only five.
The public notice indicated six.
So maybe I deter this to our secretary, deputy secretary, how to proceed or find out whether it is-
I'm going to ask the presenter if they can pull the notice, the public notice that was sent out.
It's a public notice, revised public hearing notice mailed on or before Sunday, August 3rd.
So you say the number six is about the accessible parking space?
Yeah, number six, chapter 200, .15, .10, .5, bracket one, bracket D, by law 5692013. Required minimum number of accessible parking spaces is two parking spaces on site. In this case, no accessible parking spaces will be provided as required on site.
Yeah, that's missing from our agenda. But is it being sent out in the public notice though? Maybe just our agenda is wrong.
Through you, Madam Chair. Notification is correct because it did go out as a revised notice. The presenter is going to present it on the screen.
Okay.
Okay, while he's trying to get that up and running, perhaps the agent could continue with their presentation.
Okay, so we accepted that this revision.
Yes.
And it's also, it's given to the public notice.
It was properly notified.
Okay, it's just, we are missing it. That's by on agenda. So please go ahead then with your presentation, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So the application before you is to legalize commercial uses within the existing building. The existing building is approximately 95 years old. It was constructed as a commercial building or at least commercial at grade as well as the adjoining half of the semi-detached structure. So this premises has been used for commercial premises for the last eight years by my client as office space for a residential design firm. The upstairs is occupied by an interior designer as office space. And prior to their purchase of the building, there was a artist's studio and art gallery in there. There is a long history of this premise being used for commercial purposes, but it is not zoned as such. The abutting properties to the east and on both corners of Christie Street are all containing commercial uses, even though that's not what the zoning is. So the predominant land use is commercial.
Okay.
The owner is selling the property. And the owner has found, speaking with potential buyers, they're all nervous about purchasing a property for commercial purposes that is not zoned as such. They're concerned about the time and expense of applying to this committee for their particular use. So there is no particular buyer in place now with a particular use in mind. The owners have applied for a range of uses which they believe are reasonable for the property. And in fact, just to add to that, one of the owners of this property resides next door at number 915 Davenport, and he certainly has no interest in seeing some kind of use here that would impede his enjoyment of his residence.
Thank you. So can you respond also to the concern about the backyard patio?
Yes, so the application before you contains no physical alterations to the building. If it were a condition of approval that there could be no patio seating in the rear yard, that would be fine by us.
Okay, that's good to hear. Yeah, and, okay, thank you. Are you done?
That's all, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Yes.
Just a very quick question. When the letter of opposition was concerned about garbage disposals, issues and stuff like that, could you address that very briefly?
So as I've seen, the property, the two properties to the east contain restaurants. And they do keep their waste bins on the street. I don't believe they actually have a rear yard to keep anything in. This property actually does extend to a laneway and currently has a garage abutting that laneway. So there would be the potential for this property, should there be an eating establishment, to arrange for their waste to be properly stored in the rear and then just brought out on garbage days.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? No, okay.
So through you, Madam Chair. We can go back to the owner at 434, just to confirm because the agent has-
Has responded, yeah.
Responded to the no patio, outdoor patio seating in the rear.
Thank you. So that's great, and we would support a condition attached to the zoning amendment to stipulate that there be no outdoor seating or service for whatever dining use is permitted at the property.
Okay, thank you.
And a final question, just in regard to what was just spoken about of food waste being kept in the backyard. So currently, that little garage that you can see on the drawing there is a pretty dilapidated structure. is a, a pretty dilapidated structure, um, so in regards to keeping the food waste, you know, securely and in a sanitary way, because, you know, any kind of, um, slippage in that, in that use is gonna cause, you know, rat infestations and whatnot in the surrounding properties. There's already issues with that from the uses being kept on the front. So if there's any condition that could be added to require, you know, um, up-to-code use of food, uh, safety and food waste, uh, safety systems, then that would be good, because, you know, if it's just a matter of throwing it in a bunch of green bins, like happens on the front of Davenport Street right now, which is already leading to problems, then there'll be further issues.
Thank you, uh, actually, I can respond, uh, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, I, 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 I think that the garbage collection or handling of the garbage is outside our mandate, and they are expected to follow all these, uh, the city regulations and all. But if you find that some violations or, uh, uh, further done, you can always call three one one and inform the city, they will come down and inspect it, yeah. I think that is a popular route, yeah, thank you. Uh, any question to this speaker first, and then we can move back into the agent. Uh, they have garbage concern.
Uh, and that, that's a reasonable concern to have, and if the committee were to impose a condition that any waste for an eating establishment, that waste storage must be in a proper, uh, enclosure, uh, we have no objection to that kind of, uh, condition. In fact, uh, one of the owners, since he lives next door, would, would be the first one who would concur that that, uh, is necessary.
But that, as I say, I think that is a city's mandate, not the committee's adjustment put on the conditions without knowing, I, I, I assume that certain building require enclosure and certain building can take it to the curb, I'm, I'm not too sure. So that's why we do not know how to impose that condition, what do you?
Through you, Madam Chair, I agree, it's, it's a difficult one to impose, because are you gonna send city staff out every week to ensure that this garbage is stored to the rear in an enclosed structure?
Mm-hmm, because I, I know that the city has very, very clear, uh, regulations concerning garbage. If they violate any of the, in the, uh, the area, uh, regulations, they can always call, uh, city, three one one to inform the problem.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yes, so, uh, we, we, we move on, so, uh, any other question, otherwise we are in committee, yeah. Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, you know, this is, uh, this seems like a desirable, uh, adjustment. Uh, as the agent said, this has been used as a commercial space for a long time. All of these uses are ones that are either have been used or have been used nearby, um, and it adds vibrancy to the street, so I think it's very desirable. Um, uh, so I would move, we approve the variances with the condition that there be no patio seating or outdoor service, uh, outdoor service at the rear of the building.
Yes, um, okay, anyone's, one second?
I'll second that.
Mister buyer, second, and all in favor of with that condition? unanimously approved with that patio condition?
Very much.
Thank you very much, yeah. And, uh, we move on to item number nine. Uh, nu- number nine is, uh, one thirty-five Cannon Wolf Avenue, and this is to construct a new two-story osserial building containing, containing a garden suite in the rear yard of the existing two-story detached dwelling. There will be a total of two residential units, uh, on the property, and we receive also, uh, survey site plan, four plan elevations, a revised site plan and four, uh, four plan elevations, and a revised zoning notice, and a red line public notice, and a cover letter from the agent, and a tree protection plan from the agent. And also, we receive comment, uh, from, uh, natural within, uh, urban forestry, and, uh, number nine, so we are ready for the agent, and I'd like the agent to actually guide us through what the revisions are on this application.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Yes.
Brad, you've been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, uh, I'm, uh, Brad Tapson, uh, one oh seven Hamilton Street, agent for the owner.
Yes, thank you, um, first of all, just as I say, you have made some revisions, let's go through that first, yeah.
Sure, yeah, so as you can see, uh, we revised the site plan and the strategy for the rear yard to remove the variance for, uh, soft landscaping. So we're now including, uh, fifty-three point four two square meters, which is fifty-one percent of the rear yard as soft landscaping.
Okay, so, so you're seeking only one variance, okay, thank you.
One variance, correct.
So, uh, uh, that's clear, and then, uh, because you do not have any opposition, I check whether the panel, uh, requires a presentation from you. No, uh, any questions, yeah, we do have question for you, okay?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, I just wonder if you could speak to forestry, um, the, the staff report from forestry that has recommended, um, a re- a deferral and or denial of the application, I'm just wondering if you have any comment as far as that's concerned, and perhaps if your, um, revision may have, uh, an impact on this particular staff report?
Uh, interesting, sorry, I didn't see that, um.
Am I reading incorrectly?
Yeah, I think they recommending a forestry condition two only, not nothing.
Oh, I beg your pardon, then I've made a mistake, I was reading further down. Okay, I apologize, you're okay, you're all clear.
You scared me, thank you.
But, but, yeah, but you still agree to the forestry condition two though, right?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure that, all right, so any other questions, yeah? All right, so we do not have any more question for you, uh, do you want to, uh, anything you want to address to, uh, the panel specifically before we move to discussion?
Um, the only comment I would make is that the, the revision is, it related basically to the condition of the existing retaining walls, those need to be repaired and replaced. And so, uh, we're doing that on the rear property line, and in order to sort of synergize the, the proposal with that required work, we're, uh, requesting the variance to push right back to the property line.
Okay, thank you, now we are in committee, yeah. Uh, as the, the agenda is amended, by the way, okay?
Thank you, Chair, um, I, first of all, I must redeem myself by apologizing for scaring you, I hope your heart's still okay. Um, I also must compliment the fact that you were able to, uh, remove, uh, the one variance, which increases the rear soft landscaping, so that's great. And given that this is an application with a single variance, which in general is a minor one, I see no reason not to support this amended application, um, that has the forestry two condition.
Yes, uh, Mister, Mister, a second? Yes, yeah, all in favor of amended application and con- forestry condition two? Oh, unanimously approved, thank you, all in favor, yeah, thank you very much, it's approved. Do we wanna break? Yes, we like to take a, uh,
Five minute break?
Five minutes, but, yeah, thank you. That was okay. Okay. Number ten, let's resume, uh, item number ten. Twenty-six Baker Avenue, uh, this is, uh, the purpose for this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, including a basement level and a rear first-story deck and with stairs and a weird, um, second-story bay window. We receive a copy of the survey site plan, uh, four plans and elevation, and five photographs of the property, um, we, they are seeking for two variances. Uh, welcome, the, yeah.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, it seems to be quite a straightforward application, and you do not have any, uh, oppositions, uh, and then the, with the panel requires.
Name and address first.
Oh, yes.
Oh, thank you, good morning.
Thank you, you give us, name your address for, for record, yeah, thank you.
Uh, my name is, uh, Shawei, uh, last name is C I T Yi Cheng. Address is Seventeen Northern Crescent.
Okay, thank you, and I just, uh, thank you for reminding me, yeah, we good, we have to welcome you. Uh, you do not have any oppositions, and we have read all the material, and it seems to be a quite a straightforward application, it's
One question.
You have questions, yes, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, um, does the proponent intend on retaining the garage in the backyard?
Mm-hmm, can you, yes.
Yes, the garage is removed, yeah.
Thank you.
What's that, the garage, I can't hear?
Existing garage.
The existing garage?
Yeah, reme-
Mm-hmm. Can you, yes.
Yes, the garage is removed.
Thank you.
What's that, the garage?
Existing garage.
The existing garage will be removed?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask the question? Is it important to mention that in our, because whether we have to revise our purpose statement? No, okay, thank you, yeah. So, any other questions? No, we do not have any more questions. Do you want to, something you want to address the panel before we move into a decision?
Thank you.
Okay, now we are in committee, yes, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I, I'd like to move a motion to approve, but just before I do that, I think the site plan does indicate that the garage is to be removed and presumably soft landscaping. I think this is going to be one of the easier applications for today, it's very minor. Two variances, both of, the asks are actually very minor indeed. I'd like to move an approval and I believe there are no conditions attached to this one.
Yes. Mr. Business, second, and approved with no conditions. All in favor, yes, unanimously approved, thank you for coming, yeah. And our next item is, item number eleven is two sixty Bain Avenue. For this, this application is to alter existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third-floor addition and a first-story side, west-side roof deck. The rear ground floor one-story addition has been demolished and a new rear ground floor deck with stairs and as well as a rear basement walkout has already been constructed under a proof building permit. We receive a survey site plan, four plan elevations, and two photographs of the property and a cover letter from the agent and email from the agent and a building permit number and a metal link, a permit number, a metal link permit. And also, we receive comments from metal link and we have also support from two sixty-two Bain Avenue.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Lynn, you've been unmuted?
Yeah, they're asking for two variances.
Could you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, can you give your name and address?
Yes, hello, my name is Lynn Houston, I'm forty-nine Oak Crest Avenue and I'm the agent for the owners on this application.
Okay, thank you. Since you do not have any oppositions and I just will check whether the panel wants to have a presentation from you, no, they do not have, they do not need a presentation, do they have any questions? And no, no questions, so we do not have any questions, we do...
Sorry, Chair, I was just going to ask, it just occurred to me. I did make a note on the third-floor proposed deck, is there privacy screen on the west side, by any chance?
There is no privacy screen at the moment, but there is nothing really to be private from. The neighbor doesn't have any windows or anything facing that direction.
Okay, so there's no overlook on a neighboring property, I take it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, yeah. More questions? No, we do not have any more questions. Do you have anything you want to address us before we move into a decision?
I don't think it's necessary, but thank you.
No, thank you very much, so we are in committee, yes, please.
I'm happy to make a motion on this one.
Yes.
I live nearby and, so, yeah, it's actually an existing balcony and they're just filling it partially in. It's really very minor and they have, they have the okay from their neighbors or from their attached neighbors at any rate. There's really, it's really minor, there's no impact on anyone, so I move that we approve this variance without any, any conditions.
I don't think, yeah, by it, okay, you said, Mr. Byers, second, all in favor, we have no conditions, unanimously approved, thank you, thank you for coming. And the next item is number twelve, number twelve is fourteen Ellis Park Road. This is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling. The basement level is considered to be the first floor and by constructing a candid extension to the existing front second-story porch platform and a new front porch roof, the existing front third-story balcony will be demolished. We receive a copy of plan, survey site plan, four plans and elevations and a decision affecting the subject property and email corresponding from the, from Urban Forestry and a robust report by the agent and presentation material from the agent and also neighborhood outreach law from the agent. And we also receive comment from TRCA and also the Natural Within Protection of the Forestry. And we receive support from thirteen letters of certain, letter from Ellis Park Road and also from seventeen, number seventeen. And we have also received concerns from the Swansea area ratepayers association. And we are ready for the agent?
Through the chair, we have the agent online and one registered speaker in person.
If the registered speaker in opposition or, do you know?
Through the chair, we haven't confirmed that.
Okay.
Should we confirm that?
Madam Chair, I believe it's in concern.
It's concern.
And it's, it's the letter that was received in the supplemental package.
Oh, okay. So, so we should ask, we should get a presentation then, yeah?
Through you, Madam Chair, let's hear from the agent first and then we'll move to the speaker.
Yes, let's have the agent, please, thank you.
George, you've been unmuted?
Hello, good morning, committee members. Everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Hey, my name is George Silva from Design Distillery Inc., located at ninety Power Street, Unit Two. I'm the agent and architect for the owner.
Okay, so, we, we do receive opposition and the one person's going to speak for this application, so, maybe you can give us a five-minute presentation, maximum?
Five minutes?
Absolutely, sure. Could, could we get the supporting material package displayed? Page two, please? We can, yeah, so, so, today, today, we're asking for the two minor variances previously listed. To put this into perspective, these minor variances are based on a technicality that requires committee approval to place a guardrail of the front porch in the location that's proposed. Perfect, page three is fine, page three, please? Back up, back up to the elevations? Page, page number three, to the elevations? Yes, thank you. The zoning technicality is regarding established grade. This particular site has a dropped southeast corner, causing the average grade at the front where established grade is determined to be lower than the other three elevations. As you can see in green, aside from the south elevation, the majority of grade is well above the established grade. Therefore, if the topography didn't dip in the southeast corner as it does, this would be considered a typical front porch at the ground floor level. It would not need these two variances and would be as-of right. Page number four, please, next, there you go. This, these two, two front porch plans highlight the difference between a permitted as-of-right proposal and one that requires the variances listed. The one on the right is what we're proposing. It's important to note that in both examples, the roof platform area and shape that's shown in yellow are identical. So what we're looking at is the difference between guard location, which was, what triggered these variances. Next slide, please? This slide speaks for itself. It highlights previous approved decisions within a thousand-meter radius over the last ten years. These decisions have allowed platforms higher than the first floor to encroach into the setbacks. There's sixteen in total. And flip to the next page, actually, the page number seven, yes. Much like the previous graphic, this also speaks for itself. It highlights previous approved decisions across thirty-one different properties with platforms greater than ten square meters, several of which had multiple platforms approved. I'd like to note that there are ten properties on these two lists that are in common and that have both variances granted. Page number nine, please? This, this graphic, along with the neighbor outreach log and the letters of support uploaded, shows the effort the clients made to speak to their surrounding and affected neighbors. They received substantial support with no opposition from the immediate neighbors. In total, there were thirteen letters submitted, however, only twelve made it onto this particular graph at that time. And that's, so, in, to conclude, the unusual site topography of the southeast corner sets established grade significantly lower than the average grade for the entire building, resulting in the ground floor front porch being technically classified as the second-story platform. However, previous approved decisions by the committee within the area show precedence that variances requested are not out of line with the approvals, with other approvals from the area. As such, we believe this minor variance application passes the four tests of the Planning Act. The variances are minor in nature, appropriate and desirable for the area and within keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw and official plan. And I'd like to remind the committee that this is, really comes down to the location of a guard.
I see, thank you. Yeah, so, we will hold our question to you until after we heard the opposition. Do you want to ask the question now? Okay.
So, just to clarify, I'm not, actually, through what, from all these plans and whatever, are you expanding the porch?
The, so, so if you, if you go to the, to the left, the, the actual presentation shows, shows everything, shows the, the difference between the porch, but in this, in this plan, you can see the, the original existing ground floor and the porch is highlighted. The porch on the, under the ground floor area at the top of the screen, you'll, you'll see that the porch is highlighted there. That's, that's the existing and the proposed is essentially pulling, pulling the platform forward because the, these individuals had issues with water infiltration and so forth, so that's what we, we were brought on to, to rectify and to upgrade the look of the building a little bit.
Yes, so you're just expanding the porch a little bit? You're, you're stretching it out from its existing all the way to the edge of the house?
Yeah, the porch, the porch is out to the right.
That's what I'm trying to clarify, thanks.
Thank you, so, yeah, all right, thank you, so we are ready for the next speaker.
Could the speaker from ninety-five Lavenia Avenue come to the podium?
Good morning, I think this mic's on.
Yeah, give us your name and address, please, yeah.
Yes, Nicholas Singh, Swansea area ratepayers. I'll need on the screen, and I believe you'll find it in the late box, the submission from Swansea area ratepayers. It's called fourteen Ellis Park Comparison Proposed Variance. Okay, so the agent of this property suggested that the variance for the encroachment is improper because the property is sloped and the second floor should be treated as a first floor. Much of Swansea is covered in ridges and ravines and there's really nothing that unusual about this lot. The measurements used to determine the established grade are taken at the front of the building, which is exactly where the front platform is being proposed, and these measurements are intended to take into account the slope across the front of the building and intended to determine if the platform should be considered as a second floor, and in this case, it should be. As per section forty-five, under which this tribunal is constituted, the test for the bylaws to ensure that the intent and purpose of the bylaw are maintained, and that's the mandate of this committee to apply that test. If we were to throw out the definition every time it turns out that the measurement reveals a second floor, the definition becomes useless and we would ignore the intent and purpose of the bylaw and stop taking the measurements. So the ratepayers support the findings of the zoning examiner and urge the panel to deal with the variances as, as they have been presented in the public notice. The architect also suggested, and I quote, "A front porch on the ground floor on, level would not require these minor variances." The truth is, if we look at the ground floor platform, we would, sorry, there would be more variances. Both bylaws, ten five forty fifty and ten five forty sixty, require that the ground floor, first floor, also comply with the main setbacks. Additionally, bylaw ten five forty fifty has a height requirement that would require a variance. And then, of course, there's the exception nine six one that the zoning examiner has cited. The variance sought in the application seeks to evade a site-specific provision that was specifically placed on this property. From an overall perspective, not only do the bylaws not allow an encroachment, but even if they did, exception nine six one rolls that back. The essential point here is whether it is a first floor or a second floor, the platform does not qualify for a setback. In this, the, is the intent and purpose of the bylaw and we urge you to respect that and not approve the variance. I can answer questions if you have doubts about the, the application of the bylaw. So turning to the official plan, can I have on screen, yes, our fourteen Ellis, our chart? So I provided the community with full text of the official plan policy applicable to this application, that's policy four point one point five and highlights. So I'd like to raise a couple quotes. "No changes will be made through zoning, minor variance, consent, or other public action that are out of keeping with the overall physical character of the entire neighborhood." "Two, the prevailing building type and physical character of a geographic neighborhood will be determined by the most frequently occurring form of development in that neighborhood." So the phrase "most frequently occurring" means that this policy is numbers-based and allows us to take any bias or guesswork out of it and to look at the numbers. So there's no provision for the official plan to consider committee of adjustment approvals as the criteria for determining if a proposal fits the physical character of a neighborhood. In fact, none of the four tests is proven by comparing the proposed variances. So let's look at the numbers. There are one thousand six hundred comparable buildings in the broader context area that was chosen by the applicant, and there are twenty-three buildings in the immediate context as defined by the official plan. The applicant did not look at the immediate context. So in the broader context, there were sixteen COA approvals for encroachment found by the applicant, that's a one percent match. In the immediate context, there were none, so that's a zero percent match. For excess size, there were forty-four balconies in thirty-one applications in the broader context, that's a two point seven five percent match. For excess size in the immediate context, there was only one balcony, that results in a four point three percent match. For the combined variances in the broader context, there were ten balconies, as the, as the agent just recognized, and that gives us a zero point six two percent match. as the agent just recognized, and that gives us a 0.62% match. In the immediate context, excuse me, there were zero matches. All all results.
Yeah, your five minutes is up.
Okay, I'm I'm just about finished. The results are a fail for the test for both the official plan and the zoning bylaw, and I submit that based on the evidence before this committee, there is no guesswork. The variances do not pass the test for the official plan and the bylaws. They should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any question to this speaker? Yeah, I have one question. Thank you for all those data, the comparable data, but we, well, they're seeking two variances. I'd like to see your opinion about that particular two variances, what kind of impact you think that, just in terms of impact, not in terms of statistic data that we create.
Okay, so the impact, the impact is one of the four variances, and I'm not saying that the impact is great. I'm not commenting either way on the on the impact, so.
Oh, no, no, this is the specifically I like to get from you. You do not think the impact is is sort of a considerable, is a considerable issue on this particular variance?
With respect, Madam Chair, I'm I'm not here to address the impact. I'm here to address the the official plan.
Okay.
And that test for the official plan.
Okay, thank you. That's what I want to clear clarify. Okay, all right. Thank you. Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah. All right, so we bring back the agent to respond to the the speaker's concern, yeah.
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to note that the front porch, as as I as I described, if it were considered a ground-level porch, is a permitted encroachment by by the zoning bylaw. I'd also like to to refer to the the two maps that we put together on the the supporting documentation. And to the two maps, please.
You know what? This.
Number five?
Yeah.
Page number five, please. Number five, please. There's page, page numbers on the left, sorry, the left corner. Perfect. So as we can see, there are examples in the immediate context along that same block. And as well on the on the following page seven, there's also examples on that same block. So there's there's precedents in the area. We we still believe this is such a minor, minor variance that is triggered by the movement of a guard rail. In in the plans that we previously shown, you can you can flip up to the the two-floor plans that are there. So we can see the difference between the the green. The green guard rail is what we've been told by the zoning is the existing condition, actually. That is allowable. The platform in yellow is allowable. All we're proposing is to make this look a little more articulated and pull these these guard rails to the forefront of that platform and and essentially provide something that that is is there anyways. The constructibility is there. What what we can propose is that we make them transparent. We can propose glass for that area and and be to just to minimize that. But I'd like to also pull up the the photos from the arborist report. It really shows what's visible from the street. So from from the street level, that's what we're what we're seeing, where we have a lot of vegetation. We're planning on continuing to keep all that vegetation. We've been, we've, we've asked a arborist report to, or an arborist to advise us on on proper, proper planting and so forth for this and so that we're being sensitive to TRCA, urban forestry, and so forth. We've had no issues with any of that from from those ends, and we we still just really believe that this is such a minor, minor ask that and and at the end of the day, there's there's lots of precedents in those in that 1,000-meter radius and and lots of neighbor support ultimately. The the immediate neighbors are in support. There were zero opposition to to those that were in that immediate 60-meter radius. So we we really feel this 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 should be a very simple, straightforward decision.
Okay, thank you. Yes. A question to the agent. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah. This is, this is indeed quite minor, but I'm just a little frustrated by his reference to the guard rail. It it's not about the guard rail, it's about the use of that roof for a porch. So this is, in fact, an expansion of the porch, as is very clear from the variances produced. The fact that he could build a roof there and it would be okay does not mean is not the same as building a porch. So I just want to clarify, like, that is not, you know, that that's a pointless distinction. They're expanding the porch, that's fine, we can judge on that. But I I don't, the idea that it's just about the guard rail, it's not about the guard rail, it's about the use of that platform as a porch.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, that's only clarification, yeah, that the overall is what he's tried, he he said, yeah. Okay, any other questions, please? Okay, we do not have any more questions. Now we're in committee. Anyone wants to take this on?
I find the application for variances is portable. I I carefully read the TRCA review and 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 the TRCA doesn't have any objections to these variances, so I take that opinion very seriously, given the geography in the area.
Yeah.
I, I'll, yeah, the the actual encroachment is really quite small. And also, I think that the best judges of what's appropriate in the location are the neighbors, and the neighbors have clearly said that they're fine with it. So clearly, they feel that it is, does suit the character of the of the neighborhood. And also, I think I take the the applicant's point that it's heavily treated and forested. I don't think that anyone will be able to see this additional construction, so I think it's supportable as well.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the variances.
And there's advisory comment from our end, our natural review is to put tree protection holding.
Yes, okay. Wait there.
Put that.
Not a condition, no.
No advisory, yeah.
If it's advisory, then it's not a condition.
Yeah, so we just mentioned.
So no conditions?
Yes. Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Reese, second, all in favor, no conditions, approved unanimously. Thank you. And number 13 is, the property is 156 Gribmont, Gribmont Avenue, is this is to alter the existing two-story mixed-use building by converting the ground floor commercial unit into a residential unit. There will be a total of three residential dwelling unit on this lot. And we receive a survey, site plan, floor plan, and elevation, and six photographs of the property, and also corresponding from 154 Gribmont Avenue. And we have the agent in person. Thank you. Yeah, welcome.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person and three registered speakers in opposition.
Three speakers in opposition, so give us your name and address. I think we require a five-minute presentation from you because you have oppositions.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Vandertoon. I am the agent and architect for the current owner, and my address is 57 Mon Crescent Trump.
Okay. So you you have your five minutes. You can give us a presentation now, yeah.
The owner and I submitted this application to the Committee of Adjustment. There is a current space on the ground floor of this two-story building, and the owner has had repeated trouble in his efforts to lease the space as a commercial space. It was a couple years ago, it was a convenience store. That store closed, and for a number of months, it was vacant. It is currently leased as a photography studio, but that lease is short-term, and so the owner requested to apply for an application to convert the existing commercial space into a residential unit. There are two other residential units in this building currently. There's one in the rear of the ground floor, and there's another one on the upper floor. So the application would see three in total residential units. This property is actually zoned residential, so I would let the committee members know that the commercial use is in, it does not comply with the current zoning as a residential. So in fact, by converting this space to residential, it would be in compliance with the zoning and would very much be in the keeping with the neighborhood, which is all residential. There are currently two licensed parking spaces on this property, and those would be maintained. The variances that we have listed, there's nine in total, all relate to maintaining the existing building. There's no application to really alter the building, it's an interior alteration only. And so all of the variances relate to the existing conditions.
Thank you. Can I just, do you have any question? Can I just ask you just to clarify? You just mentioned that it is, it is zoned residential, but this is a mixed-use, apparently, right? You have commercial.
So do you. Used as a mixed.
Yeah, it is, is it? Do you you have the non lawful, non-conforming use lawfully now?
It's an older building, and it was.
No, do you have the lawful, non-conforming use?
I don't know if that, if it is lawfully non-conforming, because the current owner purchased the building about maybe a dozen years ago, and it was an existing convenience store. So he purchased it as is, so I'm not sure.
I I think it probably was a.
Was, yeah, yeah.
Non-conform, legally non-conforming.
Non-conforming use, yeah. I would just want to clarify this.
It it looks like it's built as a corner store, has a distinctive architecture of that, so my guess would be that it's been a corner store for a very long time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we we would like to listen to the other speakers then now, okay?
Okay.
As you can just wait. So we are ready for the other speakers.
Through the chair, the speaker from 105 The Queen's Way is just logged off.
Oh.
I'm going to try to locate that person. Perhaps we can move on to the next speaker? Bruce, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. My name is Bruce Connor. I live at 320 Springdale Boulevard. I've lived here for well over 35 years. Just as an aside, I can't testify to the fact that that building has been used as a corner store for at least as long as I've been here. The photograph that was shown is also out of date by, I don't know, three years at least, is now, there's a studio sign there instead of the Lieb Mart sign. That aside, I understand we we need more residences for people, we need densification, infill housing to prevent urban sprawl, et cetera. But in the local area, we have the O'Connor Bowl Building that's been converted from a bowling alley to a seven-story, story, 142-unit building. We have the building at 985 Woodbine and quite a few close addresses there, which are about to be converted into a 35-story and a 10-story building encompassing 646 units. Neighborhoods have individual character. That includes neighborhoods we all know by name, Leslieville, Blor West Village, Greettown. I hate to say it, this is where I live, but the neighborhood character right around here is boring. It's one house after another, after another. It all looks the same. Shoot me. Now, a studio is a very unique thing. I I think it's fantastic to have something that's that different in the neighborhood. It gives the neighborhood some life, much-needed life, texture, character, and interest that currently is not here. This gives locals a chance to interact in ways they don't otherwise, especially since COVID. People interact less on the street than they used to. This can be a focal point. It brings people in. People get to experience something else, and it can also bring people to the neighborhood, a thing like this. I I really think the current use as as a studio is a great thing for the neighborhood, and I would strongly recommend maintaining it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, yeah. Okay, can we find the previous speaker?
Through the chair, let's proceed with the third speaker and then circle back to the first one.
Okay. Yeah.
Nika, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hi. My name is Nika. I reside at 784 Salmon Avenue. I am also a current commercial tenant of the space, so I do hear retaliation of speaking out. But I did want to point that even though I am on a month-by-month lease, I have been occupying the commercial spaces of photo studio for two years, just a little bit over two years, two years and two months, and I'm very, very grateful for an opportunity to have an artistic space. I have a question. My landlord, he asked to get into the space to post the rezoning sign on Friday, August the 1st, that was before the long weekend, literally the Friday of the long weekend, where it stated that people can leave comments by the following Tuesday. So my question is, is that a sufficient amount of time for neighbors to assess the situation?
We can, I think we can respond to that, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, posting of the sign is 10 days prior to the hearing date.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Not 20, okay.
I have a question for.
Let me, let me see, let us just finish first.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Have you finished your presentation, or you have more to say?
Well, I I do hear the retaliation from the landlord, so that's it with my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
So my question is, would you be willing to sign a long-term lease for this space if that opportunity was available?
Would love to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, that's a good question. That's, yeah, all right. So we have more speakers, right?
Kai, are you there? Kai, are you there? Through the chair, we've made multiple attempts to locate the speaker from 105 The Queen's Way and was unsuccessful.
All right, so what, so what, did he, did he submit some written?
Through you, Madam Chair. It doesn't seem like there was anything submitted by this owner at 105 The Queen's Way. We can proceed back to the agent.
Yeah, let's bring back the agent. We tried multiple times.
Okay, I can respond to the first speaker, Bruce. Of course, we want to see a diverse use in the city of Toronto, and the current occupant, the photography studio, has been there for a little while. The owner is telling me that he's had to charge her a phenomenally low rent in order to keep her in the space. He had other people previously look at the space, and nothing seemed to work. And so he would like to keep this tenant, but it makes better sense for him to renovate it and have it as a residential unit, because there's so much more demand for residential units. And in the other two units in this building, he's had long-term tenants and has not had a problem ever renting it if it has become vacant. In fact, the owner did used to live in the upstairs apartment himself, and so right away, he rented it and has not had a problem. The rear tenant also, on the ground floor, has been a long-term tenant. So he wants to try and use that model as something he can do in the front of the shop, what was a shop. I did try to canvass the neighborhood last Friday, a week ago Friday. Unfortunately, no one answered their door. I did receive one letter of support from the neighbor Kitty Corner to the current building at 169 Glebe Mount. So she would be at the east-south corner, southeast corner, and she agreed that it would be great to have this space as a residential unit, and in fact reiterated that it is zoned residential in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any question to this?
Yes, just a couple of quick ones. I know we've got seven variances in front of us, but.
Yes.
When I was looking at the images of the property and the locations, and it occurred to me that perhaps, as you quite correctly pointed out subsequently, that this was residential when presumably it was built, or not?
You can see in the photographs, it was a corner shop.
Oh, it was built initially, not as a home.
So I would suspect that the zoning designation came after the building was built.
Yeah.
And that's why it's one of these, you know, grandfather convenience stores. But as you know, a lot of these convenience stores are becoming dinosaurs, and so that's why the owner wants to convert it to a residential unit.
After.
Where there's much more demand for that type of use.
So most of the variances, and you can correct me if you go through, of the seven variances, are most of them existing circumstances? Is there any one or two or three that are not existing?
You're right, there's nine variances, and they all relate to the existing building.
Nine, yeah.
Yeah, and we're not proposing to alter the building footprint or expand the building anyway. So the building will stand as is. It's basically an interior alteration.
It's two things, I suppose. One is interior alterations, the other is the change of use.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions, please? No, so we do not have any more questions. Now we are in committee. Okay, yeah, Mr. Reed, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, there's a lot of, I live in this general area, and there's a lot of these convenience stores. It was definitely, this is definitely, I actually, I've actually written about this, this is definitely a building that was built as a convenience store. It has the specific characteristics of that. I'm a little torn on this one. I totally understand that, you know, that it's harder to lease to a commercial tenant. On the other hand, there is actually a tenant who's willing to sign a long-term lease here, and, you know, if it was a long-term lease, perhaps they'd be willing to pay a bit more. And I really take the opponent's comment that it's important to have some variety in these spaces. There's a lot of residential already. And in fact, the city, as we all know, has actually been working on a plan specifically to allow more retail spaces in residential areas. That's, you know, it's still going through the process, but that's definitely a goal of the city, is to have more retail spaces in residential areas. And, you know, not necessarily just a convenience store. It could be a service like a photography studio. And providing a space for an artist is actually a really valuable contribution. I think, also, like, I mean, you know, I also see that, like, the improvements would be like, there'd be a little more soft landscaping, which would be great. I sort of recognize that. If they'd been, if they were unable to find a tenant, I would, I would certainly be sympathetic. But there is a tenant there. Yes, commercial rents are lower than residential rents, but at the same time, I feel like, you know, that it creates a valuable alternative space in the area. So I'm tempted to not support this, given that there is someone who's willing to sign a long-term lease.
Yes. Okay, yes, Mr. Bissonnet, yes, you want to speak, yeah?
Sure, I take my colleague's point seriously, and he's, he's quite knowledgeable in this respect. I just take an opposing view that if a landlord has a plan for, for their building, and, and they want to move that plan forward and adapt the use and turn it into residential use, I just, as a member of this committee, would not want to stand in their way.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, any comment?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Bissonnet, just, my sentiments are similar to his, and to Mr. Reed's, because it's wonderful to have an eclectic neighborhood, you know, if it's not a rubber-stamped copy of it, boring as the one person in opposition noted. On the other hand, this is a building that has an owner who'd like to, I suppose, make it more financially viable, but to Mr. Reed's point, you've got a tenant who's willing to sign a long-term lease. I think that should be perhaps investigated first. And if that is sufficient for the owner to say, yeah, you know, it's financially viable, I think that, then you just stay with what you have with a tenant.
Yeah.
I know convenience stores are very difficult to run, requires, so financially, they may not have the capacity to, to support larger rents. But if this particular tenant currently, what I might just throw out there is that instead of refusing this application, perhaps we ask the agent to perhaps look at a deferral and see if the long-term tenant tenancy is possible, so that if that's a viable thing, then you don't have to do any alterations. You know, you've got a new tenant, pays the rent, on you go. So that is a thought that I would throw out and see if that may be.
I'd like to add mine, though. I think that we got a little bit distracted on concerning the business plan. I don't, I think that the rents, even residential varies a lot, and then commercial or studio use, that, that, the committee, I don't think we, we should be focused on that, because we have so little data to base on whether this is viable, that's not viable. But I agree actually more with Mr. Reed's comments in terms of that, the purpose of the building. It was set out for so long. And then I'm more focused on the, whether the development or the change is desirable or not. I, I think that the current existing purpose, as it was built, and also there was an existing tenant, and, and it's not a convenience store owner, but it is a studio type of use, is desirable. And it proves that it's desirable, because there are people actually in demand. Whether it's business-wise, we can't, we, I don't even know how to tap into that, whether they make more money this way or that way. I think that we should stay away from that, and I tend to agree with Mr. Reed's idea about whether it's desirable, whether it's actually it's desirable and a stable development in the neighborhood. That's my comment, yeah.
Yeah, I may just add, I thank you for your comments, actually, because I think your point is very well taken. What are we dealing with here? It's a change of use.
Yes, it's a change of use, yeah.
Question is, is it desirable?
Yes. Because there's not lack of residential drowning in the area, but there's almost none of this mixed use in the neighborhood. I think that is worth preserving that use. This is my opinion, yeah.
I think the deferral might be too complicated.
Perhaps.
So I, I will move then to refuse the application for the reasons discussed.
Yes. Okay, so, okay, anyone want to second that?
Also.
Sahith's second. All in favor for refuse 3-1, Mr. Bissonnet dissent to refuse this application, yeah? It's been refused, yeah, this thing. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming. So the next item is being deferred, yeah, sorry. Number 14 is being deferred, and we move to number 15, 61 Hannah Avenue. This we said. This, this application is to alter the development standards of a site-specific zoning bylaw for the, for multi, multi-phase multi-building and mixed-use development with a public park and privately-owned publicly-accessible spaces, and also an extension of the existing public municipal road network with respect to the phase influence of the building and also permit type and phrase development on the land, provided that each phrase development has funded and access to a public highway. A related site plan control application is currently under review. We have received a survey site plan for plan elevations, 24 photographs of the site, and cover letter from the agent and a decision affecting the property. We also have presentation material from the agent and the site-specific zoning bylaw. We received comment from community planning and also from MetroLinks.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Okay, we are ready for the, oh, in person, sorry. I have read the material, but I, this is the first time I encountered talk called the phrase construction. Can you, in a nutshell, don't go too technical, just explain what your issues are?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name's Megan Barrett. I'm a lawyer at Eardan Burles. Our address is 181 Bay Street. In terms of your question, Madam Chair, about the phased construction, this is in the context of a draft plan of subdivision, which was approved by council in 2024. And if you could please pull up page one of the presentation that I prepared, it's a color-coded version of the site plan, and I think that's going to help explain your question, help me explain your question. If you look on this, on the screen here, and what you've got in the different colors are the different phases, basically, of the development. So in blue there is a public street, which will be conveyed, it's currently a private road in Liberty Village, it will be conveyed. Block one in pink is going to be a two-tower development. And again, this subdivision has been approved, the zoning has been approved for the site, and we're in the process of applying for, for site plan. Green will be a public park, and purple is a future phase of the development. So in order to build this out, it will not all happen at once. First, the street will be conveyed, then Phase One will be built out, then the park will be conveyed and built out, and then, then the purple phase, Phase Two, will be constructed. So that's what we mean by phase development, and you'll see the variance itself is to section seven of the site-specific zoning bylaw, which deals with phasing. And it's very technical, but really, all it means is that you can't pull a permit above or below grade until you front on a public street. You're a lot, the block fronts on a public street. And in this case, the block that is really affected by that is Block One. As I said, what's there today is actually a private road, I had not realized, fronting onto to Block One.
Okay, so it's basically, in terms of the, you're not in sync with what all these requirement and the construction phase or whatever.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Like, you cannot do it because of timing, that's why.
Exactly. So initially, the conveyance of the public street was a condition of draft plan approval. And now, the conveyance of the street in consultation with the city can occur slightly later, but still prior to any permit at all being pulled for Phase One. The city's still getting its street. It's a way for the city to ensure that it gets its street, but it gives us a little bit more flexibility on the timing of that.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, it was really hard to figure out. So basically, the goal is that you don't have to do the conveyance. You have a bit more flexibility about the timing of the conveyance, but you're putting this in to assure the city that you will still convey it before you start building anything?
That's exactly right. Otherwise, the city has no leverage to ensure conveyance.
Right, okay.
Yes, because you signed agreement that it's a.
Right. So in this way, they won't be able to pull permits, because they will not comply with applicable law until the conveyance of the street has happened. So the variance in the site-specific zoning bylaw creates a new, basically, condition, applicable law condition prior to the issuance of permit.
You're bringing this as the applicant, but you're doing that in order to assure the city that you're going to sort of follow the intent of the original agreement?
That's exactly right. We've been working closely with staff on this.
Understood, okay.
So the conveyance agreement is still intact, it's only that it will be deferred, is it right, yeah?
The, the city and the public will still get the street. That's right.
And they'll still get the street before anything starts getting built?
Get the street before anything is built. That's exactly right.
All right, so, yeah, I asked my question, because I couldn't, you know, I couldn't understand the other phrase. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we do not have any questions. Thank you for the information, yeah. So we are in committee now. It seems that they, the staff report say that they're okay with what they're asking, so they have no issues.
Yeah, I'll put forward a motion to approve the variance.
Yes, please. Do we, that's, do they?
Through you, Madam Chair. MetroLinks has a warning condition?
Yes.
Yeah, so we need to include the one.
Yeah, Metro, yeah, MetroLink conditions, okay. With that condition, second.
I'll second.
You second? Okay.
Now that I understand it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, and then we second. All in favor of that conditions? All in favor, approve. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 16 is 553 One Rome. The purpose for this is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached by constructing a front one-story addition, and with, which is enclosed the porch, with new landings and stairs, as well as to construct a front second-story addition, and a rear basement walkout, and a rear ground floor with stairs, and a rear two-story addition. and a rear two-story addition and interior alteration for new, uh, three, uh, for three new dwelling units and also to construct a rear two-story auxiliary building which is a laneway with, uh, which is under construction and there will be a total of four residential units on this lot. And we receive a survey site plan for plan and elevation, uh, four photographs and a cover letter from the agent and also a building permit number. And we, they are seeking for two variances and we are ready for the agent or the applicant.
Uh, through the chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers.
No registered speaker, okay.
Sabir?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Mohammed Sabir Hassan, I'm the agent and the responsible engineer for this project. Uh, my address is eleven zero three Dunbutton Road, Pickering. Owner is also in the meeting, joint online. Uh, so basically, as you mentioned, we applied for two minor variances. One is basically the existing front porch, we just wanna enclose it and make a second floor on it. And at the rear, we have an existing covered deck, same thing, we just wanna enclose it and make a second floor. So basically you're not extending the existing foundation wall, basement foundation wall, it's, we're just gonna go up as we are trying to make this existing single semi-detached to a three-unit dwelling. And the laneway house is already under construction, the foundation has been poured, we are working on the framing. So the variance is, we are encroaching a little bit at the front, at the front porch because right now the main wall is, the, uh, we are enclosing the porch. And the rear side, the distance between the laneway house and the existing like a house, basically, we are not complying by the current zoning bylaw. So we want to add variance for that as well. So basically two distance here, you're talking about. Otherwise, the building length, uh, lot coverage, those are fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you do not have any oppositions, I see whether we have questions for you. Yes, please, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so just to clarify, the, the laneway house, um, originally was basically as of right, uh, but because you're actually expanding the main house, that's triggering the variance, is that correct?
Yes, for the rear extension, uh, because the existing footprint is only five hundred square feet, so for a single unit is pretty small. We are trying to convert each floor as a single unit, so we try hoping to get more space.
Right, good, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? So we don't have any more questions, now we are in committee. Yeah, I think this is quite straightforward, forward application, anyone want to start? Oh, yes, Mr. Weed, yeah, please.
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, I think the specifics of this, um, this application, this lot, uh, make this a reasonable application. Uh, as the applicant pointed out, they're not really expanding the foundations, they're just building up on the existing front porch. Um, it's really quite a small lot. Um, the, the house itself is not, doesn't require any height variance or length variance. Um, so, you know, I think it, given, given those circumstances, it's reasonable to be creating a sort of tight space. Um, so I, I move that we approve this with no conditions.
Yes, again, Mr. Sand, second, all in favour with no conditions? Uh, all in favour, namely approved, thank you, it's approved, yeah, so. The next item is number seventeen, um, number, number seventeen is sixty Winona Drive. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition and a rear ground floor deck and a rear second story deck and interior alteration to convert the dwelling into a triplex building. And there will be a total of three residential dwelling units on this lot. And we have received a survey site plan for plan elevation, four photographs and we receive a letter of concern from fifty-six Winona Drive. And we haven't received anything more and they are seeking for one variance, thank you.
Through the chair, we have the agent online and three registered speakers.
Sorry, you are not the agent?
I thought I got, I thought I was able to speak to a delay first.
Through you, Madam Chair, first, I'm gonna ask you to move over.
Oh, yes.
Because you need to be in camera.
Okay.
We need to hear from the agent first.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll hear your request, okay?
Okay.
Hi, morning, uh, my name is Marco Rotundo, six one zero Boz Road, Unit Three, Vaughan, Ontario. Uh, I'm the agent for the application representing the owners today.
Okay, I think you do have a, a one person in concern want to speak, so maybe you can give us a piece?
Through you, Madam Chair, we have three speakers that are gonna be speaking. Their request is gonna be for the committee to defer the application for not enough time to review the materials. Uh, Agent, are you in favour of a deferral?
Uh, no, we are not in favour of deferral today.
Okay.
Okay, so we can, we can go, yeah, you can go ahead because you do have opposition. Give us a five-minute maximum presentation, yeah.
Sure, thanks very much. Uh, so the application before you today is very, very straightforward. Um, as you read already in kind of the preamble, uh, what we are proposing is to convert this existing two-story family dwelling into a triplex, so there'd be a unit on the ground floor, second floor, and then the unit itself would be another, another unit down there. Uh, this is already zoned R, so no, you know, rezoning required, this is completely as of right on this property. And the only variance we are requesting for you to facilitate this development is a length, sorry, a depth variance of an additional two-point-three meters from the required nineteen. Uh, the reason for this is quite simple. The original dwelling was built significantly setback from the permitted front yard setback, as you can see from the site plan. Uh, and you can also see how the two neighboring properties are built quite forward of that. Um, as a result, obviously, the depth is measured from the required front yard setback, not from the front of the building. So as a result, we are getting penalized for that addition, um, which we are planning to add to facilitate the added units in the building. Uh, I'd like to also point out that this lot is one of the deeper lots on the street and therefore kind of lends itself to, to facilitate this kind of development compared to the one, let's say, to the immediate south which has a laneway in the back. Uh, so yeah, with respect to the development, it's just a simple addition at the back to facilitate this new use. Um, I would like to just comment, I know that there has been some concern from the neighbors, uh, specifically with the request to defer the application for more time in order to discuss. Uh, I'd like to just point out to the committee, uh, that the current owners of the property had gone to the immediate neighbors, specifically fifty-eight, fifty-six and sixty-four Winona Drive. Those are the immediate neighbors on each side, uh, on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. So that's actually two months, uh, prior to this day, uh, with a full comprehensive package which included a site plan, a description of the plans and a cover letter from myself which encouraged them to reach out to us directly with any questions or concerns or if they had anything they wanted to discuss with us. Uh, we received our first message or sort of outreach just a few weeks ago. Um, so that is the reason why we are, you know, asking that we do not defer because we believe we gave them ample time to reach out and discuss plans. They're only doing so now at the nth hour, which we believe is not reasonable. So we made every attempt, uh, to, to kind of facilitate neighbor interaction. Um, we were not taking up on that, so frankly, I'm not sure, um, what more, you know, could be gained at this time. So, um, I'll leave it there, if there are any questions, I'm happy to, to answer.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, um.
So through you, Madam Chair, then we'll go to our first speaker for today.
Yes, please, yeah. Go ahead, get, give us your name and address, you can start.
Arian Green, sixty-four Winona Drive. I'm speaking today on behalf of seventy-two Winona, seventy Winona, sixty-six, fifty, actually, I'm off of, thank you. Uh, seventy-two, seventy, sixty-six, fifty-eight and fifty-six, at least.
Okay.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes.
We requested a delay in writing from two residences, not one, of this hearing to allow proper discussion among the neighbors, most of whom are away, many of which are out of the country. We received the hearing notice on July twenty-fourth for today, August the thirteenth. Crucially, this period coincides with peak vacation time. In mid-June, a February black and white rendering of the, was provided only to the immediate neighbors with no indication that this hearing would be during the summer. In refusing the delay, the neighbors were told that ample time was given to respond. However, no definition of ample time was ever agreed upon. Uh, we should have been advised upfront what the definition of ample time is so we could negotiate that timeframe if necessary. As a result, many residences are unable to attend or voice their concerns today. We find this procedurally unjust and short-sighted. A three-weeks hearing notice in summer is inadequate for meaningful discussion, denying us the chance to meet and articulate our concerns as a community. We also asked for colour renderings in writing, which has been refused, quote, "at this stage", and we would like sufficient time for the agent to prepare these renderings and I personally would like an onsite walkthrough of the design, which I am requesting today. Thank you. I thought I.
Thank you.
The time I was told.
You can continue with your presentation and explain the impact of the variance that's before Committee of Adjustment.
Okay, can I have my five minutes back?
Through you, Madam Chair, let's proceed and if you need a little bit extra time, we'll allot for that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So the second item is sunlight and sightlines. The proposed extension at twenty-one-point-three meters deep and seven-point-three-eight meters high will overshadow our properties and drastically reduce sunlight and alter sightlines. It will block natural light and existing views. Given the scale, we request an independent shade study be conducted and shared with affected neighbors to the north, south and west. This is critical to understand the full impact of light and quality of life. Privacy, the inclusion of two outdoor decks, particularly the one on the second floor, will overlook adjacent backyards to the south, north and west compromising privacy. This poses a serious and ongoing intrusion into our private spaces. We would like to see mitigation measures proposed such as privacy screens or limiting deck usage before any approval is granted. Change in neighbourhood character, this development shifts the building from a single-family home to a rental triplex without precedent for a footprint extension of this magnitude below Tyrell. While there is one other triplex, its original footprint did not change, raising concerns about the long-term chara- character and livability of the neighbourhood. This precedence invites a cascade of similar developments changing the long-term essence of the community, turning a peaceful residential enclave into something unrecognizable and overcrowded. Parking pressure will worsen, street parking is already under strain. Adding two or more units will increase demand by at least one to two cars, if not more. This needs to be addressed with clear plans for onsite parking and permits. Unclear construction impacts, we've been told construction will begin spring twenty-six. We are deeply concerned about prolonged noise, dust, heavy equipment movement, loss of on-street parking for equipment and potential risk to adjacent foundations and structures. We request a copy of the construction plan that includes activities and schedules, including how disruptions will be minimized and communicated to neighbors during construction. Environmental and ecological concerns, a vital concern is the potential disruption to local annual life, particularly the displacement of rodents like rats and mice which could lead to infestation in surrounding properties. This is certainly not to suggest that sixty Winona is a source of pests, only that excavation and construction on the site will cause displacement that did not previously provide an opportunity. We need to see a clear plan for how this will be effectively mitigated. Structural and boundary concerns, will firewalls be enforced between the property and adjoining homes? Will any fences be replaced? If so, how will the existing greenery near it be preserved and protected? In summary, we urge the committee to, one, delay the hearing to late September or October to allow more and proper community consultation when people are back from holiday. Two, require a shade study and privacy measures for the decks. Three, mandate disclosure of construction plans and schedules, parking solutions and rodent pest mitigation. Four, ensure the design aligns with the neighbourhood's character. And further, I've already said I would like an onsite walkthrough from the owner to ensure I understand the design and plans. To conclude, we are not opposed to additional Toronto housing. We are however asking for reasonable transparency, genuine, ongoing community engagement from the developer and serious consideration of the scale, impact and precedent this proposal sets. We urge the committee to delay approval until the concerns outlined are addressed. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speak to you today.
Thank you very much. Um, any question to this speaker? Okay, so we, any other speakers, yeah?
Good afternoon.
Give us your name and address, you can.
My name is Catherine Adla, I live at sixty-four Winona Drive. I am speaking on behalf of Adrian Robinson, who is at sixty-six Winona Drive and is not.
All right.
Here.
So you will have five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, the Committee of Adjustment must, without equivocation, reject the variance request for the proposed development at sixty Winona Drive. Under the former R-one, R-two, R-three zoning bylaws, this proposal would have been denied. The City of Toronto, in its effort to facilitate new housing, replaced these longstanding zoning protections with new, uh, such as D-zero-point-one-point-six, X-seven-thirty and the Zap bylaws. The city's planning department, through evidence-based research, deliberately removed restrictive zoning guardrails to encourage construction of new housing development. This new bylaw, while well-intended, leaves adjacent property owners with limited recourse to object or seek special consideration. This legislative, legislative shift has led to unintended consequences exemplified by this overreaching proposal at sixty Winona Drive which threatens the very character and integrity of the surrounding neighbourhood. The city's new bylaws provide developers with ample flexibility to build within well-defined parameters specifically designed to negate the need for variances when proposals align with the zoning framework. The application for sixty Winona Drive, however, seeks a minor variance, that is, anything but, minor. We submit that this request constitutes a major variance as it exceeds the quote, scope of the permissible adjustments and undermines the intent of D-zero-one-point-six, X-seven-thirty and the Zap bylaws, which were enacted by the City of Toronto Council to provide some semblance of balanced development with neighbourhood preservation. Developers must, at the very minimum, be held to the same standard of compliance imposed on residents who are expected to adhere strictly to these regulations and to follow the decision of this committee. The public hearing notice clearly outlines the committee's mandate to evaluate minor variances based on specific criteria. First, the variance must be minor, which we assert it is not. Second, the development must be desirable for the appropriate use of the land or building. Yet this proposal risks irreparable harm to neighboring properties. Third, it must align with the general intent and purpose of the city's zoning bylaw, which it fails to do unless the city now intends to prioritize development over neighbourhood stability. Finally, the proposal must conform to the official plan's objectives, which it does not as it jeopardizes the longstanding fabric of the Winona Drive community. Permitting this variance would set a dangerous precedent, undermining the integrity of the municipal plan controls designed to preserve neighbourhood stability and compatibility. The committee claims to form its decisions through, um, a thorough review of application materials, public submissions, deputations at hearings and site inspections. We urge the committee to accept our invitation to conduct a site inspection at sixty Winona to witness firsthand the detrimental impact this development would have on the adjacent properties and the broader neighbourhood. Approving this variance would set a dangerous precedent, eroding the protections afforded by the city's zoning framework and disregarding the rights of the residents. We ask the committee uphold the integrity of the three bylaws mentioned and the official plan rejecting this request for a variance. In doing so, you will affirm the primacy of planned orderly development over expedient alterations that jeopardize the long-term stability and harmony of our residential neighbourhood and potentially many others. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker before I move on to the next? Okay, no, no question for you. Oh, you do, yes, please.
Um, you're the direct neighbour, right?
Yes.
I'm right to the north, yes.
Oh, we both are.
Uh, so I was just wondering if you can speak to what you feel the specific impact of this would be on you, on your property, on your enjoyment of it? No, sorry, I'm asking the person who just spoke.
I'm sorry, so sorry. I'm sorry, so sorry, so sorry.
Specifically, the extension of it goes into the... There are two properties on that, which I think I saw you guys looking at Google. There's only two properties that have the density... Or, sorry, the length is ours and that one. So, by doing that, it cuts off the sun from the south for our property and goes halfway into the... Our yard... Sorry, halfway into the length of our yard. My main concern is how the construction equipment, because they are building a basement, how that's going to get into the property, as we only have right-ofways... They only have right-ofways on either side of the house, because they don't have a lane. So, that would be my major concern, which we don't know the answer. I'm sure they probably do have one, but we haven't been told. But it's also the noise, the parking, as mentioned, and the main part is, we feel like the processes beyond us as residents, it's like, here you go.
Okay. Any other question to this speaker? Yeah, okay, thank you. We are ready for the next speaker.
Jonathan, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Hook. I'm at 48 Winona Drive. So, I echo a lot of the things that were raised by the last two speakers. I guess primarily, my concern here today is the consultation. They... You know, the agent said that they reached out to neighbors fronting Winona. My property, which the agent had mistakenly referred to as a laneway, abuts the property. I was not engaged back in June when he said that he knocked on people's doors. I don't believe that the other property owners that, aside from the two Winona neighbors, were engaged at that time either. And primarily, my big concern is for the, you know, the enjoyment and use of my property, including the long driveway that ends at 61ona. There are, by my count, close to 15 kids that play regularly, that they often make use of that space. I'm concerned for their ability to enjoy that space safely and the disruption that this will have to the neighbor. I can't speak to the, you know, the fact that the development is going to completely shade out people's backyards. I think that's wrong. But for me, I will say that I'm concerned about the construction planning, the heavy equipment moving, the general safety for the neighbors, and the ability for us to enjoy our properties during the time of construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay, thank you. Yeah. We have more speakers? No. Let's bring back the agent to respond to the issues that have been raised by these speakers.
Great. Thanks very much. So, just in the interest of time, I think I can speak for everyone when I say there was a lot, a lot said there that I don't see the relevance to the application for us here today. So, I am going to just focus on specifically this application and how that relates to the four tests of the Planning Act and what, you know, the variance, actually, the implications of that. So, just to reiterate, this is a zone in our zone, and regardless of our personal feelings towards the city permission, a triplex is permitted as of right here. So, there's really no question to that. I'd like to just further reiterate that we're actually making zero changes to the front facade, front driveway, or anything remotely relating to the actual street front on Winona. So, there will be no perceivable difference to the streetscape. I know that was mentioned. So, all construction is just completely limited to the interior alterations, as well as the addition at the very rear. So, I'd just like to notify that. With respect to construction planning, obviously, the builders who eventually will be taken on to this project, this is early planning stages, obviously, will abide by Toronto Building Policies. That's just a given. Throughout that process, whether it's building permits, engineering, that would all be taken care of during that time. So, we are not really in a position right now to provide a construction plan, though we are happy to do that later on. I'd also just like to further reiterate that we made it pretty clear that we did reach out to the immediate neighbors. We thought that would be the most impactful, and they would have the most, like I said, you know, they deserve the most courtesy in this particular respect. And we did encourage them to reach out to us over two months ago. The request for color renderings, I know that was mentioned, that email was sent last week. So, we didn't say no because we don't want to be cooperative. It's just that they had two months to make that request, and then a week before the hearing, I'm told I need to provide color renderings. I think that's a little bit unfair. So, finally, yeah, I just... I'd like to kind of open it up to questions, if anybody has any questions. I'd like to further reiterate that this is a very minor variance. I've been doing this for a long time, and usually variances requested are long in length, in number, and also in scale. This is a two-meter addition to the length, to the depth overall. I think getting three residents, which is a huge problem in Toronto, getting three additional residential units for one small minor variance of 2.3 meters is actually a pretty good deal. And so, I think this definitely meets the four tests, and I'd like to open it up to any questions that the committee might have.
I do... We do have a couple of questions, yes.
I guess the obvious question is, why not build forward so that you line up with the neighboring frontages and therefore aren't actually going into the back as deeply?
Yeah, great question. Just from an architectural and engineering standpoint, just the way the house was originally built several, several decades ago, coming forward would actually present a lot more challenges from a engineering perspective, just because there is an existing garage that's sloped down towards the basement. We felt it was best, even from an impact perspective, believe it or not, to simply put a very simple three-walled addition to the existing on the rear, rather than get into the nitty-gritty of the kind of regrading and, you know, restructuring the porch and all that. We thought it was best to leave that alone and also to, you know, present... Or, sorry, preserve the street front and not have to specifically cause more disturbance on the front of Winona. I mean, somebody mentioned, you know, they're concerned about that. So, I think limiting construction to the rear would actually be preferable in this condition. So, that was the decision made. And unfortunately, as you mentioned, yeah, there is a sort of discrepancy there with the setback, but, you know, this is the existing condition we're working with, and that was the decision that was made.
Okay. The second question is, what's the actual length of your proposed building? Not the depth, but the actual length?
So, the total length of the building, one second, I have that here. Would be 17.68 meters total length. That's front wall to back wall above the actual...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have another question. It seems that you have a very deep backyard. I'd just like to know your proposed second story, the distance between your proposed two-story addition to your lot line, the rear lot line. How much is your backyard left?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the back of the proposed addition to the rear lot line would be 19.61 meters, so almost 20 meters, or 64 and a half.
You've got another 20 meters there, yeah, with no construction there, right? Okay, thank you.
Right.
Yeah, that's my question. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, yes, we do...
Just a quick one. Just to... It may be quite obvious, but I can't quite see it. So, the two-story addition at the back that you're proposing, the length, the added length of that, is that where the additional length request is for?
Yes. So, the addition at the back is triggering the variance that we are requesting. The total addition of the... Sorry, the total new proposed addition is just over five meters in itself, but the way depth is measured, like I mentioned, from the front yard required setback, 19 meters back, we are only over that by 2.3 meters.
Yeah, thank you.
One more question.
Yes, please, yeah.
The neighbors were concerned about privacy. Would you be okay with... Should we approve this with the imposition of privacy screen requirements for the rear second balcony?
Absolutely, would be our pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Is the second floor balcony on both sides, or the north and south?
We're happy to do both sides. No problem.
Both sides.
Okay.
North and south.
Second floor. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move into discussion. Okay. No, no. Tell me just one more. Okay, no more. Now, we're in...
Yeah.
Yeah, in committee, yeah.
Let me just make a comment. I think part of the difficulty with this particular project is, as Mr. Reed, I think, raised a question about, and that is that it's setback. Had it been in line with the rest of the houses on either side, I don't think this... The addition at the rear would present as much of a massing effect for the neighbors as this one does. So, I, you know, I appreciate the agent saying that a triplex is possible as of right, but not with the additional length. And so, I'm a little torn about the fact that because the house is setback and this additional two meters at the back, or whatever the specific extension would be, it does create a massing effect for both neighbors, particularly the neighbor to the north. So, I'm not quite comfortable with this particular application.
Yeah, I can add my to it. That's why I asked the question. I asked, if it's a ways, like, maybe even a standard lot, then maybe the impact is there, but it's still got 20 meter of backyard. And most of the rear yard setback required seven from five, so it means that seven from five is comfortable for a lot of it. But, yeah, so they have 20 meters, which they have no structure there. So, I thought that this specific lot can accommodate the extra length. That's my opinion only, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little torn on this one as well. The impact is... I mean, you know, we don't just do on numbers, we also do on impact, and the impact is fairly significant because it's setback. I'm especially actually worried about the neighbor to the south, who has a shorter lot and will effectively have a wall across their entire garden. On the other hand, being south-facing, it won't have as much impact on sunlight. So, I am actually not really sure. Like, I do think that the impact is fairly significant compared to other situations. But I also, as I made a note, it is an extremely deep lot, so there is space for building. So, I'm... Yeah, I'm of two minds myself.
Okay, we will give you a minute to think about. So, let's listen to Mr. Peterson and see if he can add something to it, yeah.
No, I think that the nature of living in the city is you're going to have impacts when development happens. I do find the... I had to keep checking the variance because of so much was said. I have to keep reminding myself that it was actually just one variance, but overall, I do find it's portable.
All right, so, do we need more discussion, or do we have a motion on the floor?
Let me put forward a motion, see where it goes. As I mentioned before, I think that my concern is the impact. Had this house been... Didn't have the setback from the front as it does, the issue may not have been as serious. But I find the impact will be quite great on both neighbors, to the south and the north, despite the fact that the north neighbor to the north has a deep lot. But the length of your lot won't mitigate the fact that you've got this gigantic wall next to you. So, I'd like to put forward a motion to refuse this application.
Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, it doesn't seem... The motion is second. So, we try another motion, please, yeah.
Yeah, I'll move a motion to approve the variance.
Anyone wants to second that?
I'll second, but with explanation, I think.
Oh, yeah, please.
I think that another consideration is the length of the house is actually within the triplex bylaw, I believe. I mean, I think that, you know, as the opponents point out, the triplex is fairly generous. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we should automatically extend it, but the fact that the length of the house isn't unreasonable. It's really about the placement. And, you know, the placement is as it is. I think the applicant made a reasonable point that it would have been much more onerous to try to build forward. So, you know, under those circumstances, really, the depth thing is being triggered because the building is setback. Under normal circumstances, this would be a normal size for a triplex, and it's simply because of the setback that it's being triggered. So, I feel like, you know, although I do agree that the impact is fairly significant on the neighbors, it's really because of the existing circumstances, and this is being triggered because it's setback, not because the building itself is of an excessive size. So, I think, given those considerations, I think I will second the motion to approve the variance. But I will add a friendly amendment to add privacy screens on the north and south side of the second floor balcony to address some of the privacy concerns.
Yeah, okay. Second floor, both north and south edge of the balcony.
That's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, all in favor, approve of that condition. 3-1, and Mr. Byatt dissent, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. Items number 18, 19, and 20, we can deal with them...
Very quick break.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break, just because we have a lot of speakers for the next three items that we can deal with at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, members, please turn on your videos, microphones, make sure laptops are muted. We're going to be hearing all three items, 18, 19, and 20 concurrently.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. The next items are 18, 19, and 20. And it's 53 and 55 and 57 Harriet Street. And the purpose for this application is to legalize and to maintain a new three-story, 12-unit apartment building that will span over three lots. This apartment building, building will contain a total of four residential dwelling units on each lot, and with front porch and front basement walkout, front and rear first-story balconies, and a rear ground floor decks. The building is currently under construction beyond the limits of the authorized building permit. Also, there will be a two-story auxiliary, auxiliary building containing one laneway suite abutting the laneway at 53 Harriet Street. This will increase the unit count to five residential dwelling on this lot. And we received copy of plan, survey site plan, floor plan, and elevation, five photographs of, of the subject property, and a cover letter and presentation material from the agent, and also in order to comply. We also received comment from Transportation Engineering, and we received reports from Community Planning and Urban Forestry, and also Metro Links. And we received five letters of support, and we received nineteen letters of opposition. And I, I looked through the material, it seems that the three property, or three application have similar, we have the similar materials in terms of what we have received.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent here in person. We also have a number of registered speakers for this item.
Mm-hmm. Okay, you do have quite a few positions, so we, yeah, five minutes presentation from you. Give us the name and address, please, yeah.
Craig Race, 100 Lombard Street, the architect, speaking on behalf of the owners. And if staff could please pull up our supporting material. So the application, as the chair mentioned, is for three adjacent properties. They began life as three fourplexes. However, the, the project is currently under construction with building permits in place. These permits did not require minor variances because, but because less than 50% of the existing structure could be maintained during construction, unavoidable minor variances have been triggered, and building inspections have asked for revised approvals. Next page, please. The three adjacent properties are located in Leslieville, near Gerard and Jones, about 10 blocks east of Gerard Square. Next page, please. Each property also has an as-of-right laneway suite, as the chair mentioned. However, these do not form part of the application before you today. These are as-of-right. Today's application will not alter the main buildings or site plan in any way, except for adding a barrier-free lift in the front yard basement walkouts. Next page, please. The reason revised building approvals are required is because of code requirements that resulted in the replacement of some of the existing wood studs with steel. Single-family homes are permitted to be constructed of wood frame construction. But multiplexes have additional life safety provisions and require non-combustible construction. These code requirements are new and emerging, partly due to the new interpretations being brought forward by Toronto Building Staff as multiplexes become a more common typology, and partly because of a new building code that came into effect this January. Next page, please. The issued permits were reviewed and approved by building staff to confirm that 50% of the structure was calculated to be retained. This is highlighted in blue in these materials from the approved permit drawings. Essentially, the two side walls of the outer two homes and portions of the front walls allowed the project to meet this requirement. Next page, please. Here are photos of the project under construction. The foundation below these walls were also retained with underpinning and reinforcement to reduce the need for shoring and site disruption. Next page, please. As you can see, the top plates of the walls had to be cut to allow the steel construction to carry continuously up through the exterior walls. This is a new interpretation by Toronto Building Staff that began affecting multiplex projects late last year. Prior to staff's insistence on this detail, we were able to stack steel with wood structural components inside the wall. That changes what prompted the building methodology you see here, and is the impetus for inspections to request these revised approvals. Next page, please. Being less than 50% has affected the zoning definition applied to this building, obviously. When these were considered a renovation, the project was defined as as-of-right fourplexes. As soon as less than 50% of the existing structure remained, zoning staff redefined the building as three 12-unit apartment buildings with a total of 34 variances. This is an unfortunate technicality, because the only difference is a marginal reduction in wood framing that will be completely imperceptible versus the as-of-right building permits already issued. Next page, please. There are several benefits, however, that will result from updating these approvals, one of which is this year's building code increases requirements for barrier-free units. The current permits do not have any barrier-free units, whereas a revised application will now require one barrier-free accessible unit on each property. These have been accommodated without reducing the number of bedrooms, which speaks to the relatively spacious layout of the two-bedroom rental units we did the conversion to. We are also proposing a list of conditions we recommend the committee impose to improve privacy and other features that I'll speak to after the neighbors have talked. Next page, please. We wish it would have been possible to accommodate these non-combustible requirements as part of the original permit, but at the time, we could not see the future. If we had, the project would have remained as-of-right with detailing for the necessary non-combustible provisions. But that's the world we live in. Recently, we've seen rapidly expanding new housing policies encouraging this type of housing. With that change comes technical improvements that force us to remain nimble. But we also acknowledge that we should advance our city methodically. And specifically on this project, we want to ensure the committee and neighbors that the recently implemented six-plex provisions that apply to Toronto East York will not affect this development if these variances are approved today. The conditions planning staff are recommending ties the approvals to site plan and elevations, and this will prevent additional entries to the building and ensure the buildings remain unaltered from the as-of-right fourplex approvals currently in place. Excuse me. I do think the six-plex provisions indicate the direction council is heading, though.
Five minutes is up, but since you've been speaking for three applications, so if you have something more to say, just do it quickly.
I got 15 minutes.
Through you, Madam Chair. Let's be careful on that one.
Oh, okay.
I'm almost done, Madam.
Yes, that's, that's why we have to be fair, yes.
I'll quickly note for the committee, an extensive outreach program was undertaken prior to today. A virtual neighbor information meeting was held, as well as a door-knocking campaign, where we spoke to residents who submitted letters of concern. And we've attempted to address the character and operational concerns with our list of recommended conditions I'll review later. These would be in addition to the conditions recommended by the report from Community Planning, who are supportive of the application.
Thank you.
And finally, to conclude, and thank you for your patience, in spite of the list of variances, this can be distilled to a very simple situation. This project needs steel studs instead of wood. There will be no perceptible difference from the existing as-of-right permits to what is before you today. But in spite of these invisible changes, there are visible benefits that can result from today's meeting, specifically three barrier-free units, and also enhanced provisions for privacy overlook, operational, and transportation concerns we are accepting of. Proposing no perceptible changes to the existing as-of-right building permits, and the report from planning staff tying the project to substantial accordance with those, will ensure the development is in keeping with the general intent and purpose of the E-Hon multiplex policies, the official plan, and council's ongoing efforts to encourage the creation of missing middle rental, rental housing in central transit-connected neighborhoods like this.
Thank you. We will bring you back.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. Then what I'm going to do is look to the audience. One by one, please come up, state your first and last name and the address that you reside at, and then you'll each have five minutes.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Catherine Benson. This is Brian, my husband, and we're 51 Harriet Street. And I'm speaking today on behalf of my neighbors, many of whom are here and attending online. And also, I have with me a summary letter of all our concerns of opposition with 30 signatures in opposition to the variances requested. On behalf of the residents of Harriet, Hastings, and Press Streets, we want to be clear. We support additional housing, including laneway and multiplex options. However, we're asking you to deny the current variant, sorry, the current variance, variance requests because they're not minor, and they do not align with the city's own zoning bylaws or planning goals. This development is a new build of an apartment building, not a renovation. As Craig said, 50% of the existing walls were not used, so it's not an as-of-right. It exceeds multiple zoning limits significantly. And here are the specific variance requests that we oppose. Lot coverage and landscaping. The project fails to maintain the required 50% landscaping and also underdelivers on soft landscaping requirements, creating an overbuilt site and reducing livability for both residents of the neighborhood and future residents of the new apartment building. Garbage and waste storage. We hear talk of it, but there is still no confirmed or clear plan to us to have a space large enough to fully enclose garbage, recycling, and green bins for all units, as required by the bylaw for an apartment building. Raising serious public health concerns related to odor, pest sanitation. Also, where does garbage sit for the proposed laneway units? As there is no space for passage from front to back of the already built, built apartment building for garbage management. Bicycle parking. Again, we hear talk about it, but there again is no clear or confirmed secure enclosed bicycle parking, which must be secure to, to prevent theft. And bike parking is required by the bylaw and needed to encourage transportation other than by car. Visitor parking. Zero permanent visitor parking is provided, despite the bylaw requiring three spots. We hear talk again of offering two temporary green pea permits, which are 1.2 kilometers away, which is not a viable long-term solution to the problem. This will also add to an already horrendous situation on Harriet and surrounding streets, where there is not nearly enough street parking. FSI. The floor space index is more than three times the allowable amount, creating a mass, sorry, creating a building mass and scale that are unprecedented in our neighborhood and out of character with the surrounding homes. Setbacks in privacy. Front and side setbacks are below bylaw minimums, leading to legitimate concerns about shadowing, overlook, and loss of privacy for adjacent homes. This development may provide a lot more housing unit, but it undermines the intent of the zoning bylaws, the city's official plan, and the city's stated goal, which is to introduce density that fits harmoniously within the existing physical character of the residential neighborhood. This proposal fails the city's test because it overwhelms adjacent properties, strains infrastructure, i.e. parking, traffic, and waste management, and reduces livability for current and future residents. Finally, Harriet Street is not a major corridor. It's a small, quiet residential street. And again, I want to stress that we're not, we're not here in opposition to housing. We're here asking for thoughtful density development that respects the community, the bylaws, and the long-term livability. So a practical solution we're suggesting is to eliminate the three proposed laneway units. This would create space to meet several critical bylaw requirements, namely restoring the minimum 50% landscaping and allow for soft landscaping, provide the three required visitor parking spots, allow space to install a fully enclosed garbage and recycling facility, and create secure enclosed bike parking. And my final note is to say that we've been in communication with Craig, the architect, and three of the owners, and we've been very transparent with our concerns and have been willing to collaborate, and we continue to be open to collaboration. But we ask for real substantial efforts to meet the bylaws, not Band-Aid solutions, and we hope the city will provide clarity that I think we all need to help support with this effort. So in conclusion, we ask that the committee reject the current variances as submitted or impose meaningful, clear conditions that ensure the bylaws are upheld for the benefit of the community and future residents of the building. Again, we welcome housing density, but it must be done within the city plan and bylaws. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No? Okay. That's, yeah, well, thank you, yes.
Good afternoon, or good, yeah, good afternoon, I guess. My name is Ramon Mayering. I live at 48 Harriet Street, across the street from the development. I'm going to keep this very short, because my neighbor Catherine, she explains so much of what's happening here, and so I don't think I have to go over too many of the things. We are, I am, I understand the, the move to multiplex and six-plex development in the city, and I agree entirely with it. It is an important way to expand the housing options in our city. And there are already rental units on our street. There's a triplex, two triplexes on our street, a small little street. I think the big question here is not about should we be doing multiplex units, but which lots and which, which properties does it? lots and which properties does it fit on when we're especially considering renovations? Because of the renovation nature of the building, the side lot lines and setbacks are kept at the old numbers. So on the sides, we have .63 on the east side, I believe, and .53 approximately on the west side. This is only here because it is an existing building that is being renovated. Now, the size of the renovation is quite substantial. It might not be quite substantial going back. That's debatable, but obviously it masses on top as well. So some of the problems here that that presents is that we don't have, or the residents won't have clear, unobstructed accessibility from front to back. I believe the multiplex plan's minimum is .9. Now, .6 to .9 might not seem like much if it's a height variance, but for a side setback variance, it is quite a bit when we're considering emergency services and different things. The general size of the building on the lot is quite substantial as well, which reduces the soft landscaping available and landscaping. Between the three properties, because of this, we're losing 71.8 metres square total of landscaping combined. 32.2 on one, 15.8 on a different one, and 23.8 on the other. And although some of the lots don't have a soft landscaping requirement, because I'm assuming they've met the 50% threshold, the nature of the layout, I'm interested to see how the softly landscaping applies, especially on number 57, where part of the area that is considered soft landscaping is a right-of-way for a driveway that is on Pruss Street, for a house on Pruss Street. I hope that whatever decision is made here today helps in monitoring the situation and moving forward with six-plexes and five-plexes and four-plexes development in the city, so that some of this can be avoided in the future, and maybe good solutions can be come up with so that accessibility and setbacks can be properly addressed in terms of houses that are being renovated, or in this case, as an apartment that is now constructed. The whole renovation thing gives a little bit of a wiggle room where the size of the property can be expanded, or the size of the build can be expanded on the property because it's already close to the edges. I think that's all I have to say. Like I said, we have been talking to Craig, and it is unfortunate that we're all here and that we couldn't come to some solution, but the building is quite large and it will impact many of the neighbours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just wait, check whether there were any questions for you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 58 Harriet Street, directly across the street from the apartment building that's being built. I'd like to reiterate what I know that the sentiment that all of my neighbours feel that we're not against, we're very much in support of the need for increased density of housing in downtown Toronto, that's not an issue. The issue's not with this apartment building per se, as with some of the surreptitious building practices of the developer and the sort of shoot-first, ask questions later philosophy that they've been building with. Some of these things have already been put in place. Some of these variances, I should say, have already been put in place, and they're asking for permission after the fact. There's, whether or not this is a renovation is a little bit questionable because the original walls were in fact taken down. I live across the street, and I've watched the whole build happening, and there's a neighbour directly to the east who's witnessed this as well. But more specifically, I'm here to speak to the issue of garbage storage and bicycle parking. I'm really concerned about the garbage storage. I think that the proposal, I guess, is to have large storage buildings at the very front of the property, which would be an encroachment on the city road allowance directly adjacent to the sidewalk. Oh, these are my photos, thank you for finding those. So what I want to talk about is how that's, it's really untenable for the livability and the character of our neighbourhood. As Kat said, we live in this lovely little enclave, it might, it would be hard to understand if you haven't been there, but there's a dead end. There is a plethora of green space, of unused city spaces behind houses, and we have all kinds of wildlife. We have opossums, and we have owls that sit in our trees, falcons, and what else? Deer. What else have we seen? Coyotes. And then, of course, the obligatory, you know, raccoons and squirrels and songbirds. But it's a really, really special little community. And I want to highlight the impact that having garbage storage right in front of this property on the, right next to the sidewalk, and they proposed to put bicycle storage there as well, will be a huge, a massive impact on those of us who live there. I mean, of course, for me, I live right across the street, but this development has gone from being three homes that housed five to seven residents to a building, a huge apartment building that's going to accommodate, you know, 30 to 60 residents potentially with the number of bedrooms, which we're a little bit ambiguous about these laneway houses. But there is ample space in the backyard for bicycle parking, visitor parking and garbage storage. But to put a garbage, to put garbage storage in front of this property is going to be the equivalent of putting a garbage dump on our street. I've lived on the street for over two decades. There are a number of neighbours that live on our street who are senior citizens who actually grew up in the houses that they live in. People live there for a long time. People move away and come back to the street. It's a really special little neighbourhood, and I want to reiterate that we're not against having an apartment building in the street, but the mandate of the Committee of Adjustment is to protect us from undue changes that impact the value and enjoyment of our properties. And the area in front of this, of this development, of this apartment building, is right at the dead end of our street. And it's the place where our children play safely. It's a dead end, so there's no through traffic. It's where all of our kids have learned to ride their bikes. There's a basketball net there. My neighbours' kids play basketball there. Kat's son plays hockey there. They make forts in the trees. There's a raised dead end at the end of the street that's a city green space, and the kids run back and forth without having to cross the. I came home from the cottage one year, and there was a tire swing hanging from my tree. Like, it's such a special place, and to put a garbage dump there would just destroy our community. So if you wouldn't mind going back to the pictures, I just wanted to show you how we use that space.
Your five minutes is almost up. You have 10 seconds.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
But I'd like to look at the pictures. So you can see that we picnic, and we have potlucks, we have sparklers, we have Easter egg hunts, and this is all right where that massive garbage dump would be. And can you imagine the garbage from 60 residents in this heatwave, sitting out right where your children play? It would be horrific.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Bring back, yeah.
Your time is getting late. My name is Harry Houtman at 45 Harriet Street, three doors down from the large complex. You need to remember, or need to understand that we are in a deep, deep trough where our houses are. It's 40 or 50 feet up to see the houses on Leslie Street and the houses on Pruss Street. And we're in the same watershed as the Greenwood TDC yards. So they spread down from Danforth, then we have the main railroad track going through, and then we're another 20 metres below that. So we're really, really low. But we're also hemmed in by the sides of this creek. So I want to say, back in 1910 or so, 110 years ago or so, the city was already thinking of intensification. Intensification was on its mind at that time. Planners designed housing along Hastings, so if you were to pull up the map. Hastings ends in a T intersection with Harriet. Already then, the planners chopped, they chopped 40 feet off the back end, you have to look at the city map, okay. The planners chopped 40 feet off the three houses, 33, 35, 37 Hastings, they chopped 40 feet off that, and then stuck two houses facing Hastings. So they, those five, those five houses were built without parking. They did the same thing with my house, 45 Harriet. They chopped off the back end, 30 feet, and stuck a house facing Harriet, facing Hastings. So here we have seven units, ours has two units, we have these units just on this corner without parking. So we are already quite intensified. In my printed letter to you, I pointed out that there were about a dozen houses without parking because of the steep hills behind us. So I'm now saying to the members here, to lob an apartment building with 12 units without single parking of any kind, to replace three units that had five or six residents, this is enormously detrimental to the community. It's just a real, real big overbuild. There's a lack of perspective, a lack of history, a lack of context. There's no nuance to the application of all the new laws and so forth. This location was already intensified when it was built. At that time, in the year 1910, 1915, 1918 is our house, the city already maximised the number of living units possible by eliminating a lot of parking, a lot of backyards, and so. So when this is now lobbed to on us, we also have to remember, we're talking about 15 living units, but if these are not rent-controlled, their market rents a two-bedroom at $2,800, we're going to need four students going to the University of Toronto to be able to afford to live there. Four, in one unit. So we're estimating you could have 30, 40, potentially 60 people living there. What are you going to do about 40 bicycles? We want to have bicycles for all the people living there? There's no place for 40 bicycles. The garbage was talked about extensively. Visitor parking. I really, really endorse the idea that the first Catherine presented, that the laneway houses not be permitted.
Okay, thank you. Your five minutes is up. Thank you, yeah. Oh, do I have any questions? No? Okay.
I'm Andrew Smith. I live at 40 Harriet Street. My neighbours have put forth our objections and concerns, and I won't repeat them, but I would like to draw your attention to an issue, fire safety. It's my understanding that Ontario Building Code and the Residential Tendencies Act, that all bedrooms must have windows for light, ventilation, but most importantly, as a means of exit in an emergency. In the 12-unit apartment complex, there are seven bedrooms with no windows. 53 and 57 have a windowless bedroom on the second floor. 55 Harriet, there are five windowless bedrooms, one in the basement, one on the first floor, one on the second floor, and two on the third floor. Then we go to the laneway housing. My concern is that, well, let me go here. There is a fire hydrant at 51 Harriet Street, giving the fire department the ability to get a fire truck within the required 45 metres of the property. The issue is that the fire department requires that there be a maximum of 45 metres unobstructed access of not less than 0.9 metres from the fire truck to the front door of the laneway suites. On the west side of the apartment building, the side yard is requested to be .53. In actuality, the distance between the buildings 51 and 53 is 0.62. On the east side, the requested side strip is 0.63. There is no way that a fully-adressed firefighter is going to be able to get through either of those side strips. To go from the fire hydrant at 51 Harriet Street, down to Harriet Street to the corner, down Hastings to the laneway, then up the laneway, units to the front door is about 110 metres, much more than the 45-metre limit. To fire hydrant on Hastings in front of 259 is also about 110 metres from the doors of the laneway houses. This is too far for safety. Throughout the process of this project, the builder has shown a disregard towards the neighbours. It's only because they were required to come to this meeting that we've been able to get concrete information on what they were building and that they have shown any concern for the neighbours' opinions. The as-of-right seems to have been, eh, the neighbours won't mind. Building on 67% of the lot, eh, the neighbours won't mind. No required visiting parkers? Let them park on the street, and neighbours won't mind. No room for the required wholly enclosed building for waste and recycling? Just put the bins by the sidewalk, the neighbours won't mind. The required bicycle storage? Eh, just put that by the sidewalk, too. The neighbours won't mind. Well, guess what? The neighbours do mind. I think you should withhold permission for the laneway houses. That will allow for many of the neighbours' concerns to be addressed. It will be a place for three parking spots, a place to put a self-contained building for garbage, and a space for bicycle storage. The neighbours do mind. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Any question to this speaker? Okay, there's no questions though, for now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. Yes, thank you. My name is Janice Miyagi, and I've been a renter at 60 Pruss Avenue for the past seven years. Our home is a few metres away from the proposed projects via the laneway, and I, along with the four other residents of 60 Pruss, wholeheartedly support the projects at 53, 55 and 57 Harriet Street. I have worked in the architecture industry as a designer for the past four years and have really appreciated the nuance in which the committee has approached our housing crisis this morning and for the past four years I've been working in the industry. I see zoning requirements as similar to the backing of a big quilt spread over the city. The job of this committee, as I see it, is to stitch that backing onto every little patch of a neighbourhood, to decide whether the zoning bylaws could be directly applied or whether adjustments are needed based on the particular patterns and textures of a neighbourhood. The original proposal, which included the laneway suites, has not changed significantly in size or shape and was begun as an as-of-right project. It therefore already conforms to the city's bylaws for multiplexes with no adjustments needed. Now that it's being viewed as an apartment building and different bylaws now apply, many of our neighbours are opposing this project for being at odds with the rest of our neighbourhood, which they appear to view as a which they appear to view as a uniform piece of fabric. But that, but that is neither currently nor historically true. Our neighborhood is, and has been for a long time, a multi-textured cloth made up of diverse fabrics stitched together. There are single-family homes with single families living in them, and there are also many small apartment buildings and multiplexes. This diversity is what makes our neighborhood vibrant and unique. And we see the proposed homes on Harriet as a lovely and welcome addition to our little patch of the quilt. They will fit right in with the two purpose-built nineteen-seventies multiplexes nearby, one that's two doors down and the other across the street, as well as the apartment building just down the block. Based on publicly available information, we have found that within a hundred-meter radius of the proposed projects, there are five apartment buildings and roughly sixty multiplexes in the area. Within this same radius, according to current and historic census data, the population has actually decreased since, since nineteen seventy-one by between fifty and a hundred people. We are excited to welcome new families to the neighborhood, including kids who I'm sure would love to have a home where they can play hockey in the street. These projects are in line with the character of our neighborhood and are, in fact, desperately needed given the current housing crisis. The variants requested are minor and would not even apply if these were being considered multiplexes. Allowing these projects to be completed as intended with the laneways would be an acknowledgement that our neighborhood is already economically diverse and diverse in its housing typologies, and that that diversity is our strength. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any question to? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
No more speakers for the, this item? Yep, we know that. I just want to make sure I'm...
In person, yeah.
Is there a... Everyone that's here in person.
So is there a speaker here from eleven Harriet Street? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then, through you, Madam Chair, we'll hear from those online.
Online, yep.
Ariella, you've been unmuted.
Hi there. My name is Ariella Freed. I am an owner at nineteen Harriet Street, and I agree with my neighbors, Catherine Benson, who spoke earlier, Andrew Ramon, Stephanie, and others who spoke in opposition of the variances. And I will not waste your time by reiterating their points. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, there's only just the same comments that she, she wants to... Yeah, okay, then we can have the next speaker then, please.
Todd, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hello, thank you. I just wanted to, I'm, my name's Todd Bamford. I'm at thirty-eight Harriet Street. I'm an owner here for almost twenty-five years now, and I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have said, being opposed to this particular apartment building. This is very different than the apartment buildings that were discussed by the previous person, saying there's many in the neighborhood. These are ones that have been here for a very long time and have three units in an apartment building and have a lot of green space as well as parking opportunities, as well as garbage and bicycle storage. I just wanted to support that the laneway house removal from the plan would alleviate all of the concerns and provide an opportunity for garbage and bicycles in that space, as well as allowing some green space, some water absorption. As Harry said, we are already in a very wet and low area. Feeding more water from that property into our sewers is not going to be helpful. This street floods regularly at the bottom of that hill, the dead end being the top of the hill. So increased runoff there will be a problem. But I don't want to waste your time going through all the facts. I just wanted to reiterate, been here for a very long time. I really appreciate, we need density. I have three teenagers myself that are going to need homes, hopefully in this community. We need rental, but we need to do it in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions to this? No, thank you. Yeah, we get ready for the next speaker.
Havu, you've been unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I, I live at two-seventy-two Hason Avenue. Basically, that's my neighborhood, Catherine Benson, Raymond Andrew Smith, Stephanie Perfor, basically, and they have said everything I want to say. And I totally oppose the three applications, especially the application for the building of the, of the three-lane house in the back of that building. That's all I can say.
All right, thank you. Any question to this speaker? All right, thank you very much. Yeah, so let's move on to the next one then. Thank you.
Dan, you've been unmuted.
Hi there, thank you so much. And my name is Dan Wilson. I live at twenty-five Harriet Street. I've been in the neighborhood at that location for twenty years. And I think that thoughtful intensification is essential to our city's future. So I, I recognize the need for more housing in Toronto, and absolutely, some of that has to be rental, so no issues from me or my neighbors on the issue of whether it's rent or buy. I think, for me, the major variance is about density. The requested density variance from an FSI of one-point-eight-nine versus the permitted point-six is not minor. It's more than three times the allowable limit, and so this scale of development does not meet the tests of, under the Planning Act. It disrupts the character of the area. It'll strain infrastructure, including parking, traffic, waste management, and it reduces livability, particularly for our neighbors on, on Prust Street. In terms of the official plan, the, the plan requires that the development in neighborhoods respect and reinforce the existing physical character and fit harmoniously into this context. I think this proposal fails that test, and it fails it principally because of the density and frontage use will overwhelm the adjacent properties and diminish the enjoyment of our homes. The plan also talks about livability and that development should improve the quality of life for residents. In this case, the lack of enclosed garbage, the absence of bicycle parking, will compromise the enjoyment of the neighborhood, not just us, but even for the residents of these, these proposed units. So I, I think that the variant for density should be denied by the committee. It is not minor, it is major. And all of the other variances are connected to, well, there's no room to do anything. So I think if you deny the density increase, perhaps they can rethink the, the laneway suites and find a way to, to accommodate the, the other necessities under the bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Any, any question to this speaker? Okay, and so, no, we move on to the next one then.
Rob, you've been unmuted.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, did you hear me introduce myself?
No.
Ah, okay, yeah, my name's Rob Chesson from sixty-four Prust Avenue and representing the views of my neighbors that back on to this development. I guess I would agree that the majority of the variances are minor in nature. I think similar to the last case, the, the last application that was heard, there is a good amount of massing. This property sides between the garbage and whatnot at the front, through the back of the main building. It sides on to a total of five properties on, on Prust Avenue, and the laneway suites will side on to two additional properties on Prust Avenue. So there's anywhere from six to eight properties that are being impacted by the size and scale of the building that is there. I think one of the speakers, I think the first speaker, mentioned that some of the neighbors had watched as the, as the construction continued. They saw prefab steel stud, wall panels arrive, the wood stud framing was taken down, the steel prefab wall panels were erected, and then the wood studs were reinserted in between the, the steel, steel-framed wall panels. And then there was the, the May ninth inspection that determined that all of the existing ground-floor exterior walls had been removed. Now, I'm not sure the chronology there, whether, you know, with combustibles, et cetera, whether that's what necessitated the removal, but we are where we are. Fifty percent of the existing walls were not retained. The FSI, I, I would argue that most of the variances are minor in nature, however, the FSI is not. We're talking about two-point-nine times, three-point-one-five times, and three-point-four-five times the zero-point-six permitted. Sixty-three Barker Avenue, as an example, was two-point-nine-nine times and was determined not to be a minor variance, and the application was refused. Given the, given the impact on the size and the placement of this construction, that it has, it has a, a significant impact on the livability and valuation of homes it sides on to in particular. Fifty-one Harriet now sides on to a giant wall, and several homes on Prust now back on to a giant wall, which prevents shade, et cetera. And I guess FSI is, is really where I would, where I would say that I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's minor, and I believe it has a significant impact on neighboring properties, reducing property values and livability of their properties by casting shade and presenting a giant wall at the limits of the property line. And I guess I would, I would focus on FSI and, and sort of end my discussion there.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay, we have the next, yeah.
Karen, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah, please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Harris, and I live at seventy-six Prust Avenue. So in general, I want to say that myself and my partner, who live together at seventy-six Prust Avenue, agree with the points made by previous, or the speakers, our neighbors. We are in opposition to the variances that have, are under consideration today. I'd also like to say that we are, in general, supportive of the need for density in the city and new housing and, you know, rental ownership, whatever. We understand the need for that and are supportive of that. And there is, in fact, as other speakers have stated, our neighborhood is a good example of a neighborhood where there is a mix of detached homes, semi-detached homes, apartment buildings, and multiplexes. I will say that these multiplexes and apartment buildings that are in our neighborhood are not the same as what's being proposed here today. Those other multiplexes and apartment buildings conform to the required front and side setbacks, the required softscaping and green space requirements, as well as FSI. The apartment buildings in our neighborhood also provide for parking for the residents. So those are big differences. I would like to respond specifically to some of the statements in the builder's presentation that I'm concerned about. The builder stated that support is recommended by City of Toronto planning staff for this application, and I feel, I, this is an incorrect interpretation of the letter provided by the planning department. My partner was in touch with the assistant planner, Cameron Chin, asking if the letter from the city, the planning department, was in fact a letter of support. And she confirmed the letter is not a letter of support. The letter and the report recommends that should the committee approve the application, a particular tying to plans condition be imposed. The second point I'd like to talk about is the definition of a multiplex. So the zoning bylaw five-six-nine from twenty thirteen amended as Bill eight-thirty-four, from what I understand, and again, I'm not an expert, I've been learning a lot in the last couple of weeks, this bylaw and bill sets out the, the definition of what a houseplex is. And a houseplex, let's say like a fourplex, can be detached or semi-detached, but it cannot be a townhouse or a set of row houses like this development here. There's no provision in the bylaws for townhouses that are fourplexes, so a series of houses that share walls, three houses in a row that share walls. I was trying to understand how these plans could have been approved to begin with, and it seems that, so planner on August twenty-first, semi-detached houseplex, which is allowed. And then the plans for fifty-seven Harriet Street were submitted separately on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And I've reviewed those plans, and in those plans, it specifically states that they are approved in isolation of any other property. They are only approved for the lot that the plan was submitted for, which was fifty-seven. And that it states that it is the developer's responsibility to ensure the development as a whole meets the required building codes and bylaws. And if the developer had any questions about whether the three houses together could be considered a multiplex, he should have consulted with the city planning department. Finally, my last concern is about the twenty-twenty-four Ontario Building Code. It's my understanding, again, I'm not an expert, that the twenty-twenty-four Ontario Building Code only, so it came into effect on January first, twenty-twenty-five, and that it only, sorry, and so the permit applications, it only applies to permit applications... Sorry. Permit applications submitted until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four must be submitted using the twenty-twelve Building Code. As all the permits for fifty-three, fifty-five, and fifty-seven Harriet Street were issued August twenty-first and October, October thirty-first respectively, the twenty-twenty-four Building Code should not apply to this development. Thank you, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you just made it in five minutes. Thank you so much. Any question to this speaker? No? Do we have more speakers online? Yep.
Paul, you've been unmuted.
Paul Brown, you've been unmuted.
Paul, can you hear us? Paul, you've been unmuted. Through the chair, we'll attempt to contact this speaker from seventy-two Prust Avenue.
Okay, so do we have more after him?
Yes, we'll just move on to the next speaker.
Yeah, we move to the next available speaker. Yeah, we move to the next available speaker.
Sylvia, you've been unmuted. Sylvia, are you there?
Oh, hello. Sorry, I didn't hear my name call. Yes, I'm here. My name is Sylvia Davis. I live at 54 Harriet Street. And my submissions are very short. I basically agree with everything that's been said so far regarding opposition to the project. And I have no further comments to make.
Thank you. Yeah. Questions? No. So, yeah, thank you.
Carl, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Joseph Carl Kumaradas at 70 Prest Avenue. I do have presentation material that should be in the late folder, I was told. So if we brought it up, that's great.
Let's bring it up. You have five minutes. And I hope that you will not repeat the same comments that others have made already. There'll be some new information? Please, yeah.
I'll try my best not to.
Through you, Madam Chair. While we're waiting for that to come up on the screen, we do have, we still have one, two, three, four, five, five speakers on this item. Plus, we'll have to hear from the applicant again. And then plus, we'll have to hear all your comments. So those that are in attendance for the applications that we're hearing at 2:00 PM, the committee will not begin until 4:30 this afternoon. So you can leave and come back at 4:30, or you can go home and sign in virtually at 4:30. Okay, thank you.
We're going to be here for a while. So can we contact, do we have the contact for the next speaker?
So Ms. Joseph, I'm still here, just waiting for the presentation material. If it's hard to bring up, I'll continue with it.
That's right. We have to bring up the material first. Yes, sorry, I almost forgotten.
I was told it would be in the extra late folder by Stanley. Stanley Wu. I'll get started for the sake of time in the meantime, and hopefully it comes up during my presentation, if that's okay?
You will be given five minutes anyway. Yes, so, all right.
Good afternoon, committee members. Our property directly abuts the east edge of 57 Harriet Street. We strongly object to the 11 variances being requested across these three properties. It was once a modest, single-story bungalow, as you can see on the left picture, has been transformed into a four-story structure that is now seeking approval for variances that would legitimize an FSI of 1.73x the lot area at 57 Harriet, nearly three times the permitted FSI. With the proposed three-laneway suites, this represents a fivefold increase in density from what previously existed. This is not a gentle change. The scale of this building is far beyond what is compatible with our neighborhood character. And it's this scale that results in the variances being considered. The building now looms over our property, sitting just two feet from our property line, as shown on the right side. Our cedar trees along the property line add risk with only 0.63 meters of soft landscaping instead of the required 1.5 meters. Can go to the next slide, please, or page. The privacy we've enjoyed in our home for over 20 years has been completely eliminated. The new structure features four windows on the east side that look directly onto the many backyards and decks on Prest Avenue, several balconies and windows on the north and south sides of the complex that directly overlook several backyards and decks on Prest Avenue. Two fourth-floor windows provide direct views into our second-floor bedroom, fourth-floor balconies that overlook our entire outdoor living space. When we moved to Prest Avenue in 2004, there were no windows facing our property. Even the window that was installed with our permits around 2007 was minimal compared to this intrusion. What used to be a private and enjoyable outdoor space is now dominated by the looming presence of these buildings and the loss of privacy. The developer's approach reveals a troubling... Slide three, please. The developer's approach reveals a troubling pattern of circumventing proper procedures. First, this was presented to the city as a renovation, requiring 50% of the existing walls to be retained. As stated, the walls were completely removed. The middle picture shows the installation of the new wall without the existing wall being in place. And the right picture shows the existing wall being retrofitted into that. The claim that this was done because the top sill needed to be cut does not make sense, given that the new wall could have been built without the existing wall being in place. Second, we received no consultation before the demolition began. Dr. Seligman contacted us on September 2024, only after demolition had started. When introducing himself, he never mentioned the scale of this project. Third, no permits were posted publicly until late July 2025, after a building inspector enforced an order to comply on May 14th. Finally, committee members, please understand that what we're experiencing from our back deck, where we enjoyed morning coffee for two decades, we now face a massive wall with multiple windows staring down on us. Our backyard, where our children played and where we garden, has become a fishbowl. The value of enjoyment of our property has been severely compromised. This isn't gentle densification. It's profit-driven over development. The architect would have known from the start that dropping below the 50% retention would trigger these variances, yet they proceeded anyway. We should not be rewarding such behavior by retractively granting permission. We support appropriate densification by approving these 11 variant... But approving these 11 variances sets a dangerous precedent that developers and not the city planning department decide what's appropriate for our neighborhoods. We urge you to require enclosed garbage storage, mandate the removal of the top floor to reduce density and restore some privacy, eliminate the unbuilt laneway suites, and enforce proper setbacks and landscaping requirements. The cumulative impact of these variances transforms three single-family homes into a 15-unit complex that overwhelms Harriet Street, a small residential street, and the adjacent properties on Prest Avenue. These are not minor variances. They represent a major departure from zoning bylaws designed to protect neighborhood character. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? Yep, all right. We can move to the next one.
Through the chair, we're going to try again with the speaker from 72 Prest Avenue.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me. I was actually deferring my time to Carl, who has just spoken. So apologies for the technical glitch.
Yes, okay. So you do not want to speak now?
We have the same concerns as Carl.
Thank you very much, yeah. Thank you for not repeating them. Thank you. So we can move to the next speaker.
Sorry, for the record, could you state your name?
My name is Paul Brown in 72 Prest Avenue.
Sandra, you've been unmuted. Sandra, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Sandra Smith, and I'm the owner for 2 Harriet Street. I don't want to waste your time. I'm just saying that I fully support my fellow residents of Harriet Street and oppose completely the minor variances that were put forward by 53, 55, and 57. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, yes. You have no questions to this one, right? Okay, thank you. To the next.
Dolphy, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Dolphy Lewis, and I reside with my wife at 68 Prest Avenue. Before I proceed, is there any way that my letter can be brought up on screen? They have some pictures which will help me make my point better.
Okay, just wait until we pull those materials up.
That is not 68 Prest Avenue?
Yep, because I think it's there on one file. So we have to scroll through the whole, the other... Yeah, submission too, yeah.
No, no, that's not the one.
You see it?
No, it's not there yet. I'll let you know as soon as I see it. Nope, that's not it.
Could you confirm when you submitted the letter?
I think it was August 9th.
August 9th?
9th or 11th, not 9th. You know what, never mind. I'm just gonna talk, it's fine. Yeah, that is it. This is the one.
Oh, yeah, 68, yes.
You just scroll down to the second point, and then just zoom in on the pictures there, please.
This one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the pictures, yeah. If you can just zoom that, and scroll a little bit down to the picture below as well. Perfect, thank you.
Now we can begin, the five minutes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't really want to repeat what my neighbors have said. The one point that really affects me directly is the tree canopy loss. I think the proposed developments reduced front setbacks and extensive hardscaping, leave no space for tree growth, and they are threatening existing trees. This contradicts the city's official plan, which prioritizes maintaining and growing the urban tree canopy. Maintaining and drawing the tree canopy is an important part of the city's plan, which was adopted on May 12, 2023. It is also important to note the forestry report that was submitted admits that the backyards for the new build are too small to support large growing trees and suggests paying a penalty instead of planting them. This is the case because the building is three times the size of the allotted space. And this directly causes the lack of space for trees. It is important to note that the urban forestry requests denial of the Committee of Adjustments' application due to the impact to a bylaw-protected tree nearby. The arborist report that the developer has submitted excludes 57 Harriet Street, which abuts neighboring properties. The structure blocks direct sunlight to neighboring properties and endangering trees, directly like the cedars and the log tree, which is located right behind the house at 70 Prest Street. If you could just please move on to the next point, the next page, and the pictures on there. So as you can see on the left is, we moved here in December 2024. There was nothing that was looking over our property, but right now you see this gigantic structure that's there. The rear setbacks directly contravene the intent of zoning bylaws, which preserve privacy, access to sunlight, and green space. Beyond the setback violations, now, as you can see, the developer has now installed three windows on the east side of the building. These windows directly overlook my backyard and even provide a clear view into the second-floor bedroom of my house. This constitutes a significant invasion of privacy that did not exist previously. But seriously, I'm also very concerned about the legality of the windows based on the setback impact already. The combined impact of reduced setbacks, loss of green space, and the addition of these windows has negatively affected both the value of my property and my ability to reasonably enjoy my home. I'm actually just gonna stop there because most of the rest of my points have been repeated. So I would concede this space right now.
Thank you very much. Any questions to this speaker? Okay. All right, thank you. Again, the next one?
Ingrid, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Bakewell. Good afternoon, committee members. I live at 62 Prest Avenue. And I'm here to strongly oppose the proposed variations specifically related to the addition of laneway suites to the development on Harriet Street. The proposed structure would be built at a critical pinch point in that laneway. And that laneway is used by residents of Prest and Hastings. Right now, the only way to reach my legal parking space, which is protected as a registered right-of-way, is to back into it from the laneway's 90-degree turn when traveling south to north. Under the current proposal, that turn would be not possible. Vehicles would hit one of their proposed walls for the laneway suites. The developers painted lines to show me exactly where those walls would be. And I tried with my car to navigate that turn and not hit either the utility pole or those painted lines. And repeatedly, I failed. Winter conditions would make an already impossible situation even worse as snow accumulation further narrows the space and makes access dangerous. Without the ability to make that turn, I cannot back into my space at all. And a forward approach is not physically possible due to the position of my garage and the property layout. I tried with my husband yesterday, again, several times, respecting that painted line and respecting my garage, and was unable to do it. This significantly impacts my quality of life, as well as the value of my property. I also have concerns about access of emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances. Would they be able to navigate that laneway? And would that put lives at risk and property at risk if urgent access is needed? Equally troubling, though, is a pattern of behavior from this applicant. This project was presented and is being presented as a renovation, but common sense shows that this is a new build, and it should have been classified as such from the very beginning. I don't think this ever was a renovation. And by framing it this way, the applicant has misled the community and the committee. And it has avoided proper scrutiny. In my opinion, this is a textbook case of, hey, let's ask for forgiveness afterwards instead of asking for permission, a strategy that shows a clear disregard for process, for the rules, and for you, the committee members, who are tasked with enforcing them. At no point during this process did the applicant contact me about the impact to my right-of-way and the access to my parking space. It was only after I submitted a letter of objection did they knock on my door. I urge the committee to deny the laneway suite portion of this application. It's a year-round safety hazard, a violation of property rights, and a project that has been advanced through misleading representations. Approving it would reward bad faith and set a dangerous precedent for future developments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, okay. Thank you.
Anna, you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you. My name is Anna Vaeef. I'm at 31 Prest Avenue. I've lived there for over 17 years. I echo all the objections voiced by my neighbors. And I support building affordable housing in the neighborhood, but I'm concerned about parking and wanted to briefly share my experience. Overnight street parking can be very challenging, so any changes in the neighborhood impacts the entire neighborhood. As it stands, at the end of the night, parking on most streets on most nights is 100% occupied. I've spent many nights endlessly circling the streets, looking to find a spot, and have seen my neighbors do the same. You sometimes feel like you hit the jackpot when you find one, and that's on a regular day. But we also have irregular days with temporary disruptions, and will continue to do so, such as city construction or repair work, sometimes blocking entire streets over a period of days or weeks for road type repair, snowbanks taking up spots not being plowed for weeks on end, visitors staying overnight by purchasing temporary parking permits. When these instances occur, it can be virtually impossible to find a spot. And it's important to note that Toronto parking does not give us any leeway in situations where we were unable to find a spot due to no fault of our own. I know, because I've tried and was told it's not a valid reason. You will be ticketed. For these reasons, I object. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question? Okay. Thank you.
Allison, you've been unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon, Court Van Beek, 66 Prust Avenue, one of the many properties abutting 57 Harriet to the east. I object to the application as it stands and support the many recommendations documented and voiced by neighbors, specifically the removal of the laneway suites from the plan and required remediation to address privacy concerns for those of us on the Prust side. To respect the committee's time, I'm deferring my remaining time.
Okay, thank you. All right, any question to this speaker? Okay, yes.
Through the chair, we've heard all the speakers, and for the record, we've made multiple attempts to contact the speaker from 240 Hastings Avenue, but was unsuccessful.
Yeah, you, yeah, you're, okay. Mr. Ray, before you respond to all the speakers' comment, actually, I think we have some sort of administrative business, question I will ask you is that about the variances, specifically on the bike storage, which I see on your site plan, you do provide bike storage for each property. Although I think the planning, community planning given us advice to impose the condition to tie to the site plan, which you will provide, but in terms of the variances, do you, I think that we should amend it because all your bicycle variances say that you will not provide any parking. So I have sort of do a Tory, you're short, and also only for number 57, it seems that you meet the requirement of five parking spots. So I think maybe on number 57, you can eliminate. This is, I'm only observing this way, I'm not, I'm only asking you whether I'm correct. The variance number 11 on 57, you'd have provide on your current site plan five parking storage, bike storage.
Certainly, so with respect to the variance, when this was reclassified as apartment building in multiplexes, the variance changes to require a room inside of the building.
I see.
So we do require the variance.
You still do require, also this, oh, okay, so I understand. So in that case, whatever the last sentence is, no bike storage will be provided within the building structure, but on site, you, it's outside, right? This is, you're providing on the site. Okay, that is really good because I was considering that maybe there's a contradiction. Okay, thank you, yeah. So now we are ready for your response to the many issues.
Certainly, I'll do my best. Is it possible we could pull up our list of recommended conditions, please? Because I'm going to be referring to that. So I'll just quickly address some of the points related to the approvals that are in place. I can assure the committee and the neighbors that all permits were reviewed and issued by City of Toronto staff correctly and by my office. There is no doubt that they were as of right and they did comply with the bylaws. It is the renovation clause that has changed and put us here today. Also, the, one of the speakers was correct, the 2024 Ontario Building Code requirements did not apply to the permit that's in place presently. They will apply to any revisions to the permits which we're seeking today, which is why we've been referencing those. And also, there were a few comments about requirement to provide notice to neighbors and spreading information to the broader neighborhood. Because this was as of right, we limited our outreach to only immediate neighbors during construction. However, as soon as minor variances were required, that's when we expanded the outreach to include the neighborhood meeting and more expansive door knocking campaigns. So apologies to any neighbors that didn't feel informed by this, but we did fulfill our obligations with those respects. I'll quickly note, there was a note about tree loss. There are two mature trees on adjacent properties which we have urban forestry approval to maintain as part of our existing site plan, and we intend to do so. Someone mentioned fire safety. The side yards of the buildings are not required to provide fire safety. We do have all required exits and distances to hydrants for all buildings on the site, as is exhibited by our issued permits. And I'll maybe start speaking to the variances a little bit now. In speaking to the neighbors, we understand there are quite a few character element concerns, and we wish to go above and beyond what the bylaws require by recommending the committee impose the conditions we put forward here that will require privacy film on the four small east-facing side windows. Those are bedroom windows that are required by code and are essentially the minimum size we can provide, so we don't think they create a privacy concern, but we are willing to go above and ensure they have privacy film.
Sorry, couldn't keep those up, thank you.
Are you suggesting to have frosted glass?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, oh, I see, okay.
I've included some language that's typical for the committee, if it would be helpful. Secondly, we do have small balconies that are required as areas of refuge in the building code. We are recommending privacy screening on the sides to limit overlook onto adjacent rear yards. We also would be willing to tie the approvals to conditions for bin enclosures and bike parking enclosures, as I mentioned. And I will also note that laneway suites are not a part of this application. I ensure the committee and neighbors, we do comply with all required setbacks, right-of-ways, access to adjacent properties that we have to. Unfortunately, there is a neighbor that seems to need to drive across the property to get to their rear yard. We cannot change anything about that, we are respecting the right-of-way she's entitled to and no more. And there are additional bike parking requirements that are separate and apart from this as part of the laneway approvals. So essentially, we're providing five enclosed bike parking spaces for each property here. There have also been some additional provisions offered, we heard parking was a major concern. City staff have been systematically, and council have been systematically reducing the need for parking for infill developments exactly like this, and they are not required for multiplexes. It's only when we redefine as an apartment, because some wood studs changed to steel, the visitor parking becomes required. Our best way of addressing that is by leasing two off-site visitor parking spaces, which we will hold under contract and residents can use for visitors through a sign-out process. We also will be furnishing tenants with a 12-month preloaded Presto card so they can use the TTC as part of their rent. These last two provisions, I don't think are enforceable by the committee. They're consistent for site plan control provisions, which is why we're offering them. We understand, I don't think we can be tied to them, but that is on the table and we've expressed that to the neighbors. Perhaps I'll take your questions if there are any other comments specifically that I should address, but...
I do have, I do have some question.
Sure, please.
No, it's not, I just, I understand you suggest some conditions about privacy screen and the window, and I just need more specific locations because you have three property, I have dropped it down, but I do not know the exact locations. So if we are going to impose those, we need precise description.
Certainly, I noted it as any windows in the east elevation.
East elevation.
So that would be on 57 Harriet Street.
Okay, 57, frosted glass on all the windows?
Yes.
Okay, well, okay, that I got, and all windows. And also the privacy screens, where are they and how many, please?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have the quantification. We are suggesting any rear yard balconies have privacy screens on the east and west side.
Oh, you will apply to all the rear balconies?
Yes, any second and third floor platforms.
Or second and third, that's the kind of description we need to have.
There's wording here on the screen.
It's on?
If you look at the screen, the wording is being provided.
If we just follow that, that's...
I think so, unless there's any concerns that we have with that wording.
Okay. Yep, I'm sorry, yeah, so it's already listed, but, yeah, okay, that's once the staff got it, yeah.
Question?
Yeah.
The waste and recyclable material bins shall be stored within a solid enclosure situated on the subject property or adjacent municipal right-of-way. Where would that be exactly?
So there is already a right-of-way permit in place for bin enclosures in the municipal right-of-way. That has been in our plan the entire time, and we intend to maintain it.
It's like on the site plan, I think.
There's also correspondence from Transportation who was responsible for reviewing that application, and they have no objection to the application.
Okay, so if I can ask the presenter, yeah?
Yeah, you had it just a moment ago.
Yeah, proposed site plan? Right there, okay.
A zero.
For it's shown on there.
A zero point one three, yeah, there we are.
And this is the plan that's being, community planning is requesting to tie to plans?
I think so, yeah, and they have other drawings too, you can bring up the staff report.
I'll just double check.
Yeah.
Yeah, A 0.3.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all those. Thank you. Yeah, we have all that.
The wording for that one would then have to state as shown on site plan, drawing number A 0.3.
Yes.
We'll have to add some more detailed terminology on that one?
Yes, I think so, I think...
As well as the bike storage.
Yes.
Just a question, is that okay? Or like, I noticed, I'm not sure if you're still looking for a little bit of flexibility or the placement is final in this plan?
I wrote it to have flexibility because we have been asked to add additional bins beyond what we're currently being shown, and anything that we submit would have to be approved by right-of-way management. So I prefer the way we've written it, but either would be acceptable and we will find the solution.
Okay.
So perhaps location of as shown on site plan?
Yes, I think...
And not actual number of bins?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or bike storage?
Yeah, they said that they might have to increase the number, right? Yeah, the location.
Can I actually follow up on that? On that, can I follow up on that specific issue?
Oh, no, I thought that we're going to, if we're going to approve, so I want to get all the conditions correct first.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, then you can ask questions.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So Deputy Secretary, you got all those? Yeah. Okay, right, so Mr. Ray, so you have finished your response?
As best I can, I'm pleased to address any other questions.
We can ask questions now, yeah, please, go ahead.
So yeah, I wanted to follow up on the garbage issue, which is one of the main concerns of the neighbors, and certainly something that, you know, raises questions. At the moment, there's three bins for each, each property. Were you saying that city planning is asking you to add additional bins?
No, the neighbors have been.
The neighbors, and is that okay? Is that something you're gonna be able to do?
Yes.
So what will, we end up having like one bin for every two units of each type of bin? Is that gonna, how it's gonna work out, or?
Essentially, our intention is to add one bin per enclosure, as you see, so that would be two extra-large garbage and two extra-large recycling per five-unit property.
Okay, and then two extra-large organics?
Yes.
Right, okay, so there'll be a total of six bins for each property?
That's right.
Okay, and they'll be sort of shared, you know, in a sort of unstructured way. How are the people in the laneway suites going to get their garbage to the front?
They will be provided with bins, and once a week, the building management will have to take the bins out to the curb for a collection and return them. So they will bring those around as well, and/or they can walk around to the front if they should fill up their own bins.
Okay, so the building management, so there'll be bins for the laneway suites on the laneway, and then the building management will just sort of bring them to the front when the time comes. So that, will that be in addition to those six bins?
Likely, yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to be very clear because I think it's a big concern for the neighbors, and also I think it's important to understand that there will be, in fact, be sufficient bins for what is likely to be the volume required, so that's very helpful, thank you. I want to ask about landscaping. I want to understand how it was that the previous landscaping was as of right, but now we actually have, because of the slight, because of the slight change, we don't have enough landscaping.
In the multiplex bylaw, there are two areas on the site where you have to calculate some landscaping, essentially between the rear wall and the laneway suite, and between the front wall and the front lot line. We are permitted to exclude various areas such as code-required exits or entrances to each unit.
Right.
And when we exclude those areas, we complied with the soft landscaping provisions in the multiplex bylaws.
Okay, but now that we're going under apartments, you can't count those? And is it sort of total coverage, is that correct?
That is correct, we did make some improvements to the soft landscaping after being requested by community planning, but there are provisions in the apartment bylaw, for example, for like a five-foot wide strip of landscaping on every side of the building that are impossible to comply with in this neighborhood.
Of course, but there's still, we're still at the 37 rather than 50%, but that's because this is calculated in a slightly different way for apartments than for multiplexes? Is that understood correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's also worth noting, we had been asked to replace the laneway suites with parking. That would actually reduce the amount of soft landscaping on the site if we did that. So we have been trying to balance the need for additional units with the need for parking, and we find that this particular site plan actually has substantially more soft landscaping than if we were to provide parking spaces on the site.
Speaking of parking, so I think you alluded to this, but maybe you can address directly the person whose parking space is now somewhat obstructed. I see that there is an indentation in the 57 Harriet laneway suite. I assume that is to provide some space for that access?
That's correct, there is a mutual right-of-way over that corner of the property, which we have to maintain. We did a site measurement with this neighbor. There's slightly over nine feet of clearance from the corner of the laneway suite to the corner of her property. And for context, eight feet is a standard residential garage door, so we believe she will still be able to access her parking.
Right, okay, and she's obviously tried and not been able to do so.
I believe they tried the other day, I can't speak to her ability to use it. Certainly, we are respecting the right-of-way she's entitled to.
But so the right-of-way is already marked and you respected that?
Yes, ma'am.
I see, okay. Any more question to the applicant? Right, that was my question about the turning difficulty, and I, okay. Thank you, I do not have any question either, so we are in committee now, okay. Okay, Mr. Bayet, take this on?
Maybe start off and see where we go. When I look at the variety of variances that are requested, I mean, there's certainly a heck of a lot of them. We've got 11, 11 variances per property. And some of them jump out more than others, I think the neighbors have already mentioned a number of them. One would be the wasted recyclable material collection issue, soft landscaping issue, overlook issue, and so, you know, they've raised a lot of those. I think in general, my comment would be that I think this is a very good project, but the site is the wrong one.
Yeah.
Now, having said that, the dilemma, of course, is this thing is already up. And so that's the dilemma that we have.
You mean the, as you state, as wrong means that maybe it's too tight, is that right?
I think so, I think the, you know, it's a great project, wrong location. Should have been somewhere else, and I've seen this before in the city where somebody's come up with a great project, it just happens to have been the wrong spot. I wonder if this particular project had been presented to the committee before any construction had occurred, how we would have viewed it then? Now that it's already, you know, pretty close to completion, I suppose that's part of the challenge. of the challenge.
The, the reason is that, uh, whatever they have built, they have built with approval though. That is, that is the thing that as us right compared to if this empty lot, they come with this proposal, that's a quite a difference because if as us right, you almost will see what is there now, that, that's what, uh, I understand why we come up, uh, come to this point.
And I think one of the challenges, the, one of the things that perhaps the committee, and we've already started doing it and I think you did it and I think the agent has already offered some, is that we impose certain conditions. Now that we're in this situation, that whatever conditions help mitigate.
I see, yeah.
Those we put into place, privacy screening, the windows and the heat, uh, elevation.
Yeah.
The garbage location, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's one way we can, uh, help mitigate.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, so just, as I say, let's go back to so-called whether it's overdeveloped, but then if it's as right already have this size of, uh, structures allowed, so doesn't matter whether we, uh, approve, uh, certain variances or not, the structure will be more or less the same what we're looking at if it's as right already, right? That's my, that's what I try to be, yeah, repeat myself there. Okay, any other, uh, please, yeah?
I, I mean, I actually visited the site and it's pretty imposing, I agree with my colleague that it's a good project, probably not the best location for it, but from my perspective, it's built, that structure is there, it's already imposing on the street. I don't know what denying the variances would accomplish at this point.
Yeah, yeah. And then they build under a permit before?
Yes, they built under a permit before.
Yeah, I, I guess a couple of things, uh, first of all, I just wanna point out to the, the opposition people, I, I totally understand, um, their concerns, um, I, I think parking will be a serious problem and I sympathize with that, um, but, um, the fact is that the laneway houses aren't actually in our purview, right? Like, everything we're looking at is only relating to the primary houses, we have no power to deny the laneway houses, even if we wanted to. So, first of all that, secondly, I think the garb, with the garbage, um, it's actually not uncommon for people, uh, in the east, uh, the east end of Toronto to have their garbage in enclosures on the front. Uh, it's quite possible to create quite nice enclosures that do that, but there's many houses that don't have, uh, side access and have to store their garbage in front. It's, it can be incisely, but I, I think, uh, we can, we can really, um, uh, we can hope that the developer will provide some attractive and, uh, pleasant, um, you know, frontage so that the garbage cans are not visible except and can be pulled out, um, which a lot of people have done in the east end, uh, in similar circumstances. So, uh, you know, and I, I'm also pleased that the amount of garbage provision will be expanded because I think at the moment, you know, the three, four, you know, five people, or four units wasn't really, you know, uh, one, one garbage can of each type per unit for four units was not really adequate, so I think that needs to be addressed, but it sounds like it will be. The whole process is, uh, I, I totally understand why the opposition, uh, is concerned about it, it is a little questionable, surely, you know, surely some of these, uh, problems were, and could be anticipated, but we should also point out that the city, uh, basically overlooked the question of what to do with attached multiplexes, um, we've had other people come to this with the same problem and the city is currently trying to address that problem. Uh, it is absurd to try to say that attached multiplexes are an apartment building, it doesn't really make sense to be applying that, the city is actually in the process of trying to address that oversight, which is what it was. These are being constructed as separate multiplexes, uh, although certainly, you know, uh, in relation to each other, um, and if they were separate multiplexes, they would all be pretty much as of right and we wouldn't have these things, so I think that we have to consider those, those issues. Uh, and we do know that the intent of the city is to be allowing multiplexes and to allow attached multiplexes, uh, they simply haven't got around to actually, you know, fixing that oversight. So, I, I think that we don't really have much choice in this matter, as my colleagues have said, and I think the one advantage of this process is that we can impose some conditions that will mitigate, um, uh, the impact of this thing, which would not have otherwise been the case. If this hadn't come to us, then we couldn't have imposed those conditions and it, the, you know, the neighborhood and the city wouldn't have had any opportunity to have a say. Thanks to this process, we will be able to impose some conditions, uh, the city planners will be able to impose some conditions and I think those will improve the, uh, the overall, uh, project, um, so I, I think that's.
Also, there's some concern about trees, uh, I'd also like to mention that urban forest to, to have, uh, have suggested, uh, tree conditions too. Yeah, for each property, yeah.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, just, just as a reminder, the committee can refuse certain variances, right? It, it doesn't have to be a straight approval or a straight refusal, so if there's certain things like landscaping on-site, that's a variance, um, that could be considered as, as a refusal variance if the committee had concerns about that.
I think the conditions, I mean, most of these variances are interrelated, um, and I think the conditions address them with the individual variances like bicycle parking and garbage, um, so I, I think that, you know, yeah, the other conditions all are interconnected, like if you refused one, then all the other ones would, would be triggered as well, so.
So then on that note, um, whatever motion goes in, if it's an approval, the conditions are gonna be similar to each of the applications, um, including any urban forestry conditions, community planning, and I believe Metrolinks had the warning clause.
The urban forestry does slightly different for fifty?
Yes, so item, item number eighteen would be one, two, and three, item number nineteen and twenty would be two and three.
Yes, that's it, that, that, yeah, okay, yeah, Mr. Byatt.
I wonder if I could just come out of committee for a moment, I'd like to ask a question of the agent.
Oh, okay, so we come out of the committee for a moment just because there's a question come, just came up, yeah?
You, you mentioned something about, uh, management looking after the property, I take it. Is management, uh, present on-site, living on-site as a superintendent of an apartment building, is that the idea or is this person off-property, periodically visits, et cetera? How does that work?
I, I don't know the answer to that, typically it is off-site, um, but I'm sorry, I, I don't know exactly.
And presumably the tenants would have contact number in case they need somebody to come and attend to whatever needs.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah. All right, so now we're back in committee and, uh, do, we have more, uh, comments or do we have a motion? Yes, Mr. Weed, you look like you're interested.
Make a stab at a motion, it's gonna be quite complex.
Yeah.
So, uh, for the reasons discussed by all, all members of the committee, um, I will move to approve these variances, um, with a large number of conditions. So first of all, uh, forestry conditions for number fifty-three, one, two, and three, for number fifty-five, two, and three, and for fifty-seven, two, and three, with the planning condition, with the Metrolinks warning clause, and with the four conditions, uh, provided by the agent. Do I need to read them all out or, no, okay. Uh, and then did, did we want to vary one of those, Sabrina?
Yes, through the discussions, uh, we were gonna provide more detail based on the waste, the location of the waste storage as well as the bicycle storage, because obviously they may wanna include further bins.
So how are we gonna phrase that? Like, we don't wanna tie it too closely to the site plan because we actually want more?
Right, I think they would... I think we can say terminology like the minimum, minimum number of waste bins and the location as shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
And then anything extra would be fine, right? But the only problem is, is if they're including extra storage area, is that gonna reduce landscaping?
Oh, then they have.
No, I think it's on the municipal right-of-way, right?
Yeah.
So the additional ones are gonna be on the municipal right-of-way, so they don't affect the.
Okay. We may wanna make a note then, uh, additional, um, waste will be provided on the municipal right-of-way.
So I don't have the, I don't have the wording of those things.
Right now, it just, uh, it states, "For each property, waste and recyclable material bins shall be stored within a solid enclosure situated on the subject property or adjacent municipal right-of-way."
Do we really need to make adjustments to that?
I just, it, it's, it's a condition that's hard to impose if Toronto Buildings doesn't see a location.
Oh, okay, so, uh...
So whatever's on the municipal right-of-way, that's separate from what's on private property and what's shown on the site plan. So typically, we always like to, um, indicate on a plan where certain things are located so that it helps Toronto Buildings check off that condition.
Could we say, uh, as indicated in, uh, on the site plan, uh, and?
But on the site plan, it's only showing for the private, private, so we'll.
Can we, is it something we can say also with additional ones on the municipal right-of-way?
Well, it, it already states that, or, so we'll have to say and/or adjacent municipal.
Could we say and because they promised to add?
That's fine, we can say and adjacent municipal right-of-way.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Okay.
And then this.
I think that's all the conditions?
Yes, I think so, uh, you, you covered the forested glass one.
Forestry, planning, Metrolinks, and then the applicant conditions.
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he provide four conditions, that's all included, yeah, uh, yeah, please.
Just seconding.
Oh, you, you're seconding, wow, your head was so, um, missed the business a second, okay? And all in favor of all the conditions applying to all, uh, the three properties, yeah? Three, uh, Mr. Byatt, you dissent?
No.
Oh, oh, you, you approve, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, in favor, yeah, yeah. Well, it's only taking us an hour, I guess, thank you very much for coming, it's approved with all the conditions, yeah?
Through you, Madam Chair, then the city, or the committee, uh, will reconvene at four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay, four-thirty. Four-thirty. Now it's, uh, three, quarter after three.
Oh, my gosh, yes. Where are you headed, Ryan?
Uh, Winnipeg.
Oh, good, for, for business?
For work, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you, you, no.
Yeah, I'm a lobbyist.
No, you can, we can connect you on the plane.
Yeah.
Just don't, don't eat too much.
What, what team are you on?
Uh, in nuclear sector, the nuclear sector.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So this is about, uh, small modular reactors.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.